We need started. For the budget workshop six P M on Tuesday, April second, twenty twenty four. All counselors with the exception of counselor either at least or not in attendance. Conference and schedule. Uh, we'll go ahead and start with the political regions.
What the United States. To the republic, which it stands one nation under. It is called the routine and now since more.
All right, going ahead, uh, we're actually gonna start with the overview of the capital improvement plan first. Uh, and then we'll move into revenues and we'll compete it with schools at the end. Uh, super committed to also had another conflict in the. Schedule, so hopefully fair at a later time. So starting off with the overview of the capital improvement plan.
Yeah, so. Uh, assuming that you all read the, uh, the background memo right now. As of March eighteenth, which was the first draft of the budget that you folks received. The expenditure side, we had a five point one three percent increase, and that's largely due to increases in our collective bargaining agreement salary driven. I think that the capital improvement plan may be an opportunity for us to reduce. Uh, those expenditures somewhat. And so I'm gonna outline some, some options that you have, because I think this is a really opportune time to determine. For instance. How we're going to use that hundred and, excuse me, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. That was unspent surplus from last year that we just sort of set aside until we, we determine at a later date about what we were going to do with that. We also still have a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, almost a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in ARPA funds. That have to be appropriated by the end of this calendar year. Uh, and then they have to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-six, so, so we need to keep that in mind as well. So, uh, so here, here are some options for how we might use some of those funds. So we could cash fund some of the items in this year's capital improvement plan just to avoid the financing cost that would be associated with them. So some candidates for that included a skid steer for the transfer station. Uh, a public works front end loader and an ambulance free chassis, and we also had a, a patrol vehicle, uh, on there as well, so. Those are, those are possibilities. We could appropriate. Some or all of those funds for the biggest capital expense that will be facing the town at some point in the future, and that is the complete upgrade of the radio communication system. So you may recall, this is what staff recommended, uh, to you previously, and, and you wanted some time to, to think about that. We'll have a firmer idea of that project's cost once we receive the responses to the RFP that we've issued for consulting services to design. The system and to craft the specs. Uh, we do not yet know the extent that our communities that rely upon us for dispatching services will be participated, participating in that program. Or even how that would work at this point, so, you know, we might ask them to provide a lump sum of money upfront, or we may just raise the, uh, per capita rate. Uh, that they each pay over, over a period of time, so there's different ways to skin that cap. We do anticipate that that project is gonna very easily eclipse a million dollars for the town. We could appropriate, uh, the funds for various large capital needs that we see on the horizon, uh, including. Our townwide property revaluation. That you folks approved, uh, earlier this year. Um, I believe that we need a sand salt shed in which to store, store our sand and salt. Um, we will obviously at some point need ambulance and fire truck replacements. Uh, we've been looking at sidewalk improvements and, and there are grant opportunities that we can tap into, but it still requires, uh, a match from us. And of course, Norcross Point and, and Beach Improvement, so this would allow us to either cash fund some of those, uh, things or to reduce the financing costs on, on some of those projects. And then, of course, you could do any combination, uh, of, of those three. Um, on Friday, I was at a main town and city managers association seminar. And there were some representatives there from Maine's congressional offices talking about applying for earmarks, and I think some of these projects might be ripe opportunities for that. No guarantees that we would get it, but it's a two-year process between applying and actually receiving the funds, so, and so we will definitely want to be exploring that as a funding opportunity, so. Having set the stage for that, we have all of our directors here who have projects in the capital improvement plan available. And, uh, I figured we would just start with public works and go from there, unless you have a question, Jim?
Question, just. And it's, I don't have a paper in front of me, but I'm just listening, it's, you're throwing around. Remember, I think we, maybe you don't know, but I know we paid, I mean, people, I thought you, our abundance. I'm gonna ask a bunch of people.
You're correct, ARPA funds.
So that's just the remaining, but that's already decided, everyone has to speak for it, and so.
That's correct, so, so the, so the hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars is the balance, that, that has not been appropriate. So.
I do have one.
Okay, sure, Roy.
What is the timeframe for knowing or laying out the. Uh, plan for addressing these other communities' credit, you know, communications. Is it gonna be this year, next year?
Yeah, I think next year is probably likely, uh, and Chief Erling can speak to this, but, you know, say for instance, I'm on the select board in Manchester. Well, first of all, before I know sort of what we're gonna contribute, I wanna know what the project cost is, just like you guys doing, so.
I just hear Sam.
Yeah. But, but we have, we have put them on, uh, on warning that we will be coming, uh, hand in hand to person help with that project. All right, so why don't we start with, uh, public works, uh? And you have this spreadsheet in front of you now, just as a reminder, the top half of that spreadsheet are the lease financing opportunities, so those are the ones. That you look at that perhaps begin in twenty twenty-five, which are highlighted in yellow. That we could potentially cash fund those projects, and again, that's the front end loader and the skid steer, obviously, we'd save the financing cost. But on the second, on the bottom portion of that page are monies that we would be transferring into capital reserves, uh, for future capital improvements. So do you guys wanna hear a presentation, a brief presentation from Matt about the, about the needs, and then, and then you can pepper him with questions, so Matt?
Uh, in regards to the, to the loader, I'll start with the loader, it's a two thousand fifty A six twenty-one three yard machine. It is part of, it is on part of the, uh. Capital importance improvement replacement, uh. Plan. Uh, this thing is a workhorse in the town, this is, gets called on, gets called on. Quite frequently, yes. Chief Brooks pulling, pulling off. Um. It needs a great job. I just got a quote from Oregon today that is over thirteen thousand dollars. For that, uh, and that's on including, it has to go to Skyrow. For thirty years, they will not come to the shop. Um, I talked to Jeff Paul, uh, from the heat, would be about four hundred dollars each way. To. Take it down and get it back. It needs pins, bushings, normal wear and tear. On the stuff, I did not get a quote on that, but I'm gonna guess somewhere in the. Six to eight thousand dollar range for all of them. To be done. Uh, it's got five thousand three hundred and thirty-four hours on it, and why not some today, because. That's, that's about it for the. For the loader, uh, skid steer at the. Transfer station as well, that's part of the CFP plant, uh, transfer station's pretty much dead in the water without it. Um. It has. Two thousand seven hundred and thirty-five hours on it, it needs new, uh. Tires, the solid. Uh, foam filled, but those are about, I talked with, uh. Benny at, um. Strab, I think it's Strab Tire, uh, those are about a thousand dollars a piece. And I've also asked for a forestry head. For our. New excavator that we got a few years back. It will take, it will save a lot of, lot of time in, in tree trimming and prepping, uh, area that needs to be ditched. We could use something of that nature, we go in there and make, and just load it right out, no. Really no brush at all, so powder chips when you're done. That's all, that's all I have on.
Kenny?
Yeah. I guess I'll go first, um, Matt, I. Every year we come to budget time, and we talk about that skid steer, and. I haven't said anything, but I. Don't see how having. A backhoe, front end loader and a skid steer in the same operation, I, it looks to me more like that skid steer for nothing.
That's how, that's how we clean up down in the, in the hall. When, uh. When we change trailers. That we can't get, we can't get the backhoe in there.
That's exactly why they're the.
But just the maneuverability of it, that, that little skid steer will turn on in between these. That's right here.
Oh, I, I think it's redundant, I, I.
I really don't know what we do without it. Any.
That should be something, uh.
Yeah, probably. I, I don't know what it would be.
So.
Yes, that's all I gotta say. This, my experience and background, I think it's redundant.
So the, the only thing the skid steer needs is just tires.
It needs tires, it's a two thousand sixteen, it's showing its age, it's, it's. It's. Pins and bushing, sink, sink, wear and tear stuff.
Well, what kind of skill do they have for?
Oh, they do a fantastic job, especially, especially recently, since, uh, Doug has really taken over. Down there as the foreman, they do it absolutely, he asked me.
Twenty hours on it.
What's that?
Twenty hours on it.
Uh.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thirty-five, it's.
Was that, it's not broken yet?
Yeah, I mean, I, I probably can play with some machines on the field. It's nothing to give seven, eight thousand hours. Give feeling, yeah, still working.
Okay, yeah, we did have to put a new, uh, wiring harness on it. Last year, the, uh, rodents that have a, the, the translator states that are not on there.
Yeah.
Oh, no doubt. No doubt.
They like to do wire in this box.
So when, and, and. Eleven thousand dollars. For. These, is there exactly, are these payments that we're making?
Yeah, okay. Yes, so, so, so if we were to. Finance this in the coming year, the, the payment over the next five years would be eleven thousand dollars per year.
With, and that. The loader, sorry, what is?
The loader would be, the loader would be separate, that'd be thirty thousand dollars.
Right, I've got, I've got some quotes, a problem by that case and. Caterpillar, both for replacements, if you want, you want for that, for the hill without it. Hours on the loader is five thousand three hundred.
The machine is just. So why? Are, are there any day-to-day issues we need to change, or is? I mean, are there? Yeah, I, I do know that you.
Absolutely, you know.
Part is, you know, machines out in the field or. Something public, I mean, if you guys deal with the machines, they're not getting, you know, a loader like that. Six years old, eight years old, it's fifty-three hundred.
Well, this, this was incorporated into a capital improvement plan. That whether or not you folks agree with.
We have to go on, we have the cost of that. And if we can push this stuff down the road. That you'll get some more life on the equipment and a reasonable thinking, it makes it so that, you know, it's, it's one. One step that, you know, to help us with this capital group with a overall cost of the budget, and then, you know, I think as a general rule of thumb. Townwide, citywide, we need to look at getting more life on our equipment.
Wow, this has been a fantastic growth, I mean, I can't. You know, it's, it's a really nice machine, but, uh, you know, like I said. There's probably. Twenty thousand dollars worth of work that's gonna be to go in it. Into it.
Twenty thousand dollars, if you've got five thousand hours in six years, eight years, whatever it is, what is the, uh, eight years? If you've got another three thousand hours, that is twenty grand. If you have a game, because it's still, it's still a resale value enough.
Right, uh, the. See, the, the quote from Cat, Caterpillar was, uh. Two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for a new one, only allowing forty-five thousand dollars to trade. And from Cat, uh, a new one is two thousand five, two hundred and five thousand three hundred. Uh, with sixty-five thousand allowed for trade for. For one forty-three hundred. For me.
If, um. And then right now, what's your reasons, but?
For the loader?
Yeah. But you do have more than item for.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so if, if we took, so saying, you know, the motor and the skid steer. Got another year, even if this doesn't say another year, I know this was the, you know, the schedule was, but it sounds like things are going pretty good, so on your maintenance line. We took this for another year, maybe two if you want to. And, and we took half of what we're looking at financing costs and put it into a fund out of our past reserves. When we go to purchase, we would be able to save. You know, pretty big, so we put it down favor. But that doesn't increase, you know, it kind of takes the bite out of. All finance. At that time, too, so that's something we should be thinking about if we think we will get.
Another, something that has, maintenance costs. Body breakdowns, which is really not maintenance, but they're. Are more or less constant, new machine, old machine, you start to reset, you start to change everything. You know, you got tired of the land and other weapons, but maintenance costs really. Don't want that much as machine agents, they're more or less a constant.
They should be budgeted, are they, like you figure, you know, this year might, or the next year, there might be more maintenance.
Right, I might look at, I look at the vehicles, you know, as far as. What maybe needed is maybe tires or just normal routine, regular. Maintenance stuff. But, you know, this is something that, you know, this break, break job, I didn't even realize it needed it. Until this week, when a white box on, on the dashboards and brakes are, service brakes. And we got looking at, holy crap, this isn't.
I wish I could have started.
So, yeah.
The way the dealership keeps going, it'll be the.
Thanks for presenting it, um. And I know you need the equipment, I know it's important, it's, you know, it helps, you know, all the data maintenance on it. And I just know where we are with the budget, I'm wondering. Kind of what's, apparently made a couple key points that I was looking at, maybe did the maintenance, got a few years, the stuff's money away, that reserves would actually pay cash or something. What, just so, if you gave me one number, what was the trade-in value for the skid steer, they give you there?
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, etc.
Where are we here? The skid steer from Oregon, which is another case, is, uh, sixty-three, nine hundred. Purchase price, traded value of fifteen thousand. With forty-eight, nine hundred left. And Caterpillar was. Uh. Sixty-nine, five hundred for a new one and only eight thousand for trade.
No, I, 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 I appreciate that, Matt, I, I tend to look at, I'm, I'm definitely the skid steer, I feel like it goes, so some money, I have some tires. These are, that's probably, you know, and, you know, with maintenance, but it can't be pushing the tires. You know, I, I realized we were costing, like the motor, I'll never be still there, but I still think, well, that's around, you know, it's about five thousand. This year on that, it might be, it's probably, they're both good machines, you know, I don't, I mean, I, so you know, I, I, yeah, no, absolutely, and I, I know you guys maintain a really well, so I just wanted to just. Say, I, I know you guys need them, so I think you can put the money in and buy something.
Yeah, generally, the longer it is, how long the farm, farm and developer, toward toward.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, I know, yeah, we guys do.
I guess I just don't see. Buying a new truck every time I need to cut everything. You know, I, I think we can speed go them with more time out of the machine.
I think it's necessary.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the machines. Uh, the machines these days, machines, vehicles, everything, you know. Take a snapshot twenty years ago and what you've got for hours and mileage out of. A vehicle, uh, now you can. You. Realistically can get more hours, more mileage out of a newer machine than you're going to do out of, you know, a machine that was twenty years ago.
And some do, so I'm sure that's. Right.
What is, what is a realistic trade-in value that you got from the two dealerships, but realistically, like the police department vehicle, they offered a thousand dollars, I mean, it's the same. Kind of variation, I mean, can you get more money if you offer it from private sale, other than? I'm not, I'm not really sure, I might check into that, but. We need brakes and tires.
And as you might imagine, there's a much smaller market for skid steers than for.
I don't know.
For cars. So, uh. Roy and I actually had this conversation, meant to say this earlier, but I think it's important to that. When you look at these things, and, and I'm not disputing anything that you guys are saying, especially in a tough budget year. But one thing just to keep in mind is, we don't want our, our debt service going like this, you know, because in the extreme, we saw yesterday with the, uh, with the. The county, they punted on some things and now they're having to pay the piper. So, so we just wanna be mindful not, not to do that to an extreme either.
We, I mean, I, I, I just, just simply look at the variables, set it aside for that rainy day.
Yeah, totally.
Put towards, put it down.
Yeah, totally, totally agree, Jim, so let's, so in this instance, let's say that the forty-one thousand dollars in new financing. For these two pieces of equipment, we say, you know, we're gonna try to limp along with this for the next year or two. Then, then I would say, you know, let's at least put a portion of that aside, not, and, and not nothing at all.
I mean, it's also working, you know, the other year, so I would say, working out like this year, twenty-seven, uh, the overall, we're gonna have to run it out on pieces. Um, or starting new ones, so like for this year, twenty-seven, see three hundred and fourteen thousand. So we just like move out.
Yeah, and, and then the other thing is, we also obviously have to be mindful of the, the, the operational issues that can arise if you, if you try to squeeze just a bit too much life. Out of a piece of equipment, so, you know, I, I mentioned to Roy our last, uh, snowstorm, we had two pile trucks, uh, that went down. Um. We're gonna have three, actually, yeah, we're gonna have them back for this storm, but you don't want that to happen like in the middle of a storm, in the middle of winter. Yeah.
Oh, I've been there, remember that?
Yeah.
It happened.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, all, all I'm saying is, is we just need to be mindful that there, there's, there can be operational issues involved as well.
Well, it used to be that, back in the day, when we were running some old, old equipment. Then my folder, you know, they go, Lord, what's gonna break tonight? You know, it's. That's frustrating.
Sure.
So, so as we go through this, uh, you guys wanna go ahead and make some decisions about moving some of this around, and you wanna like go through the whole thing and then revisit it at some point, how do you wanna, how do you wanna approach this? Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. Yeah.
So, so next we have our, uh, our police department. Uh, in, in fact, you see, uh, one of the new costs there, actually the only new cost in twenty twenty-five in the top part of that. Is for the replacement of a unit, so Chief Erling can explain why the, the cost of that vehicle is so much more than the other vehicles that you see above and below it.
Good evening. Um. So, you know, I spoke with Court Floyd today, I called him, he just. Told him that he two queens and stuff, so. He said, yeah. Uh, we're off with twenty-four, spring, the twenty-fives will be coming in. On this for September, twenty-four, this has gone up. Twenty-two hundred dollars since last year. And twenty-fives, we've been going up to about eighteen hundred over that twenty-four. Um. So I asked him if he could put my name on two of the twenty-fours, so we could, but if one of them, it must. We have a firm. Uh, they would save us. About eighteen hundred dollars, give the twenty-four and seven twenty-five. Uh. The total amount. Will be, probably you'll have to be about forty-five, five, just to recover. The remainder of that accomplished before. Could, could, into that time, of course. Uh, the two thousand sixteen that we are dealing with, uh, because it's a different body sound, twenty. Two's on, uh, so you can't just take the, the changes out of the sixteen and put it in the. Twenty-four, twenty-five, because they, we still have to answer. Yeah, we open up the only items that we probably have, the radio, the radar. We have the, uh. Last day, I guess, we could even. Yeah, three, four, F one fifty, one twenty-five, the last thing. New capital, zero, uh, forty thousand, is that the twenty thousand? That, I think twenty thousand, one forty-eight, that quarter, it's the last day. If you have, if I, yeah, twenty-seven.
Just a highlight of the blue, yeah, you have to buy the, buy.
Yeah, that was, that was the only thing you was, uh, wanting to put in, um, years ago.
It wasn't like a lot part of it.
So those, those are bottom, those, we bumped up.
So.
Thanks.
So. So Chief Erling and I, uh, were talking, uh, a little earlier today, and, uh, you'll notice down in the capital reserve transfers. That we, uh, are, uh, putting aside a whole five thousand dollars for a, for a patrol vehicle. And, uh, you, you know, in, in ten years, that should, that should get us, uh, one car. So, so if, if we wanted, if we wanna do something like. Uh, cash fund that patrol vehicle this year, then maybe. We, we seek some more money into that, uh, into that capital reserve as well, so that, uh, again, to. In my mind, we should be cash funding patrol vehicles, I don't think it's something that we, it's something that is. Relatively that small of a cost, we shouldn't be finding.
Is the twenty thousand when the actual spend last year out of that fund for allocated?
Uh, so which, which fund are you talking about?
Pretty good reserve. They did it here, twenty, twenty-four, twenty dollars, and then right next to it, it's five thousand dollars, because that was the actual spend.
Oh, no, so, so that's the money that's set aside. So. Wait a second. Yes, yes, but you see, it's five thousand this year.
Yeah. Okay. So there is twenty-five thousand, and then. That, like, this.
Chief, do you know what the, the, uh, the balance of that reserve account is?
Do not know. When you add that to your account, so, yeah, for last year, I don't think we did, I think it's, I mean, it's. We have, we bought a new one last year, the one I, we bought it early. I don't know what to cover that, but I, I know we bought it early, combined with you, we bought it early, because it's got a better deal, but the purchase here. So, what, what year, what are we trying to get rid of?
Four thousand sixteen. What's that?
Seven-five thousand miles on it.
Yes, I mean, sixteen, so, unit sixteen. Let's see. At some point, yeah, we did that, oh, all the bodywork down, because it's, then.
Yeah, seventy-nine, I would replace it, yeah. The other, the other thing I wanted to throw to you about that I wanted. Just to get our back even, but we have four, fifteen thousand dollars in office furniture. Uh, wine. That was put in there for, uh, new guests and chairs for dispatch. Which will all be included in that dispatch, uh, we want it, once we decide, we get the RFP on board. Start moving ahead with the, um, communication. Start moving ahead with the, um, communications project. That furniture is all included in that price, so you don't need that fifteen thousand dollars in that.
So, you can either ask the question, I guess. What, what is that?
That's the money we're setting aside for the project.
Oh, no, no, I know, but it looks like we've been setting aside for a few years and we're sorry where we are at. Then ninety, that's just been coming out of the ghetto.
Oh, yes, that's, that's as we've been coming from.
Good question. The most chill we have mission put into ten of them, the cost was incredible, thirty forty thousand dollars. I'm not, I hope after we started to bring this on that way that I don't, I don't see it. My, the money, it was, I believe it was like twenty, two or twenty three thousand that you guys set aside to do the.
I think I have a, some documents in my office that have the balances of these, uh, these capital reserves. I mean, we were right there.
And with the price going up. Would actually be more than that with all the important, if you approach this running about seventeen and three for. You're wondering, but we're gonna be using the radio and. Right out of here, that's gonna be bringing that down, it's gonna be better.
When we auction the older equipment, are we using it to buy down? The purchase price of the new equipment, or are we putting in it to the reserve account?
What, what is happening in the past is that we have money of the legal to do it now. Uh, I can throw this out to Anthony. Two, two, two weeks ago or so that, um. Maybe in logic, we wanna think of instead of. Trying to sell that in five thousand for it is. Uh, giving to the indoor service, where they need a second change vehicle. Running that random pickup truck. It might be a cheap money spent to send, send it to them to. You know, have all the lights in it, oh, that he was changing, he was moving red, and, you know, radio being up, so. Four, four, words traded, uh, going outside about two, three thousand.
So, so just to, uh, you case you're wondering, the, uh, the current balance in the PD vehicle capital reserve is thirteen thousand bucks.
I love that for those things.
It is, let me, let me see if I can find.
The one people's daughter, two years old. So, this twenty seven, twenty five thousand, twenty seven. Yeah, actually, I actually, my initial request in that line was sixty five thousand. That, that's just to replace the door locks, you know, the. Sixty five thousand, if you like, on the door locks. Yeah, the ones we have are now available, the, the company that made them. When I visit this team, they're after they reconstructing that, we. We're trying to buy every tax form. Found this company that's just made up. Set them to us in the summer. So one of the goals was to put twenty five thousand in there, and then use the surplus that I have left over from this year.
So, um, and I agree. So, we really, you know, at some point we start thinking. Preparing some type of plan to probably provide it in the. Station, especially to house that dispatch sounds like. Running water, the things that's horrifying.
The, this, the, the single, they put all you have, ten years ago, put apples off.
Right, that must be something we can look at for federal remarks, perhaps.
Definitely, I mean, uh, you know, um. The congressional office talked about projects that were like four million dollars for like childcare centers, so I think at least they should be. Much more than that.
Will we have enough room up where the fire station is up there?
I hit, uh. I hit, sent something that fall right next to the EMS garage there.
Right.
Uh, there's a lot that's owned by the town. Uh, it would facilitate.
Oh.
Egress and exit confidentially. Uh, and access to major two, two meter change there. Everything out of Manhattan, yeah, well, yeah, right down there, um, but that's something that we should look into earmarks for. Because I, I, the other question that I had, I heard asked was, you anticipate that group being able to stand everything? The better answer. It's about, the, the water's running into the station now.
Yeah.
The rolling dice.
Yeah, really.
So I'm not seeing the money for the ballistics, uh, shields in the, uh, in the capital reserve accounts. If, if it is in the, um. If it is in the guns. Sorry, I just have it here. Guns and tasers. So the, the balance in, in, uh, that account right now is twenty five thousand. And that, and, and that, that must be where it is, because I see there's a transfer in a fifteen thousand dollars, so that matches what's on this. On this spreadsheet.
Uh, yeah, I just, I'm commenting, perhaps if I remember, I wouldn't surprise anyone with me. I see you recall that that only police station is on the national register storage places. This subject came up. I think we need to look at that because if we abandon the building, we're gonna have. We'll be stuck with deserving it anyway.
Andy, was it there when you went to school?
Yeah.
Well, we don't have to abandon it, we can just put it.
So do you guys have any other questions for, uh, for Chief Berlin about his CIP? Uh, so, so I did, I did put a, a mixture packet, an email that Richard sent to me today. That describes a, a drainage issue, uh, that, that they're facing, or have been facing for a long time over at the, the library.
Yeah, I, I'll try, because I think you guys got detail that was stated. I realize that, right, that you asked that question, I'm wrapping my head, but. Uh, I think, like a chart from a couple of years ago. Anyway, for decades, the, that northwest, that northwest side of the building has, uh. Flooded probably every two to four years. Uh, we had it flood this winter. If you come down to the library right now, you can see, um, could, because we're, we finally got contracted in there this week. Sort of surprised the insurance keeps proving it, because every time we file a claim, they say. Uh, shouldn't fix this. Uh, so, you know, I'm not an engineer, I've talked with people that do this kind of work. We estimated high, um, when we were getting estimates. But we also did that with the elevator, it came in six hundred dollars. Uh, you know, within six hundred dollars, what it's gonna be, so. You know, it's kind of up to you guys, it's your building that the town owns, I'm just telling you what we deal with. Uh, in addition to major floods every few years, virtually every time you have a heavy rain. Um, we did install. Uh, water alarms in that room. Uh, so whenever it rains heavy, it's at two AM, my phone starts making an alarm. Uh, that there's water coming in. But we, we have trustees a little closer to me, usually if I. I either go in or one of them will come in, so it's about this town mailbox, but. Um, it's something that absolutely has to be done. I laid out in that email sort of the steps, you know, for meeting with. Uh, people who know a lot more about this than I do, that needs to get excavated, you need to install pipes, channels, brush, so, and degrade it. Uh, there's a possibility, depending on what the studies find, that you need to do something at a surface level. Uh, storm drains, and there's a possibility that these downspouts. Need to be rerouted, uh, right now, you know, one of the copper downspouts. Runs directly. Uh, into one of the areas. We did buy like, you know, those pads that were diverted. Is the way that it's sprayed, just flows back, back, so. Uh, it ranges from. I think it was twenty twenty one, uh, we went down there and we had a high which is standing water. It actually is so much that it might get to a hallway, and then it's a, a furnace for it. With significant. This one wasn't as bad, it was only about a inch of standing water, it did, uh, completely ruin the tiles that I put on. Uh, and that's being replaced, uh, as we speak. Like I have moved my shoe because I grabbed it early and foolishly stepped on it. Uh, so that, that's the way I, I don't. Like I said, it's your building, uh, this is something. I think that is, you know, I, I looked back at the minutes and saw it, and trusty was talking about this twenty five years ago. Long before I started, so it's something that is long overdue for, for being addressed.
When you say downspout, is that a, is that just a gutter?
No, so. The library building, because it is a national register, is copper downstairs, so the, pretty, it's a pretty significant stuff. It's coming from the very top of the roof, all the way down to the ground. And the. You know, the, the copper that's up at the top fills up with water. And then I take a video of it, it just looks like a fire hose, just.
So why can't you replace that and then see if that, if the rest is the issue?
Maybe you could, I mean, I think, I think you gotta do the first step, which is engineering study, and then.
You, you gotta, you, you need engineering, so you can't just call somebody that specializes in that?
Yeah. We had something with the logic come up a few years ago, and they said we better study on this. So.
Okay, so what guarantee? Because every building that I know. In the rain that we have had in the last year.
Yeah.
Everybody's getting water. I don't care how tight your basement is, everybody's getting it, even out of the new buildings that I know. So my question is, are they gonna guarantee we have no water in that building? So for seventy five thousand dollars, um, you know, in my opinion, either they're, we're gonna guar- get guaranteed there's no water in that building, or. I mean, i- is there sub pumps there? Is there anything like that that's emptying that water?
Yeah, there's not, we, we, we haven't looked at that in the sub pump issue. The way the building is designed, the way we're using the building, there's really not place to put. It's, it's, we, we have explored that, I, people come in and know a lot more about this than me.
They can't dig a hole in the, in the floor and.
Yeah, we were looking at places to put it without going to actually, that's. You know, one issue is the building city granted to, uh, which was a big issue when you go, the addition. Uh, which is part of why the basement is smaller, the, the ceiling makes it lower.
I mean, I just don't know if you, if you have, we spend all this kind of money, that's gonna fix the issue. We're getting a lot of rain. And, I mean, if it has to be pumped out, it has to be pumped out, but I just, I, I, I don't know what you're gonna solve it with. This grading and, and, I don't know, excavating.
Yes, he thinks of the light eyes.
Thank you.
We did ask.
Yeah, and.
This is where we're at, so the money period.
My other thought is, I. Seems like a lot of my, and that's just me. I feel like we need to public works, Matt's not here, but I feel like you've got a message here, and we'll probably get up there and create it, even. Here's a stone, some pipe, and, you know, you can put it under drain, and I'm, I'm sure the shop guys have put a fresh drain, put a lot of. Just to try something versus spending this amount of money, and as you kind of heard, the, the, what I'm talking about. Trying to make sure we can keep the budget down, we've gone up the last two years.
Yeah.
And, you know, I really like to try not to increase property taxes down for the, for the citizens who are running this town. But we also, I know that we've got to spend money to fix things and make these work, right, and so, but. Let's do it wisely. So if we take an opportunity, because we got the equipment, we got the, we got the manpower, what's the possibilities of doing something like that? Try, right, to give you a study that's gonna cost, you know, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, you know, fifteen thousand dollars to escalate. There's, I, I, I would like to see a few quotes.
From a few guys. If you want construction workers out there who's excavating, put drains around it. Maybe you've got a lot of water. Maybe I might have an engineering study done. Just just make some sense. Thanks.
Not so much a question as a statement, but many times over the years, as you tested to many different peoples. That the bark mulch around that building on that end is like a bigger sponge. And it's not helping the situation. That it should be removed and, you know, the sub treffer should be arced and then perhaps more of that. To allow more of it. And it's just, that's a cheap thing to try to do. And I don't understand why it's never published.
Thank you. Do you have a line item for routine maintenance or, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, what what is in that? Because it is a town building, but it isn't your budget exactly.
Yeah, we have a we have a line item for maintenance. The last couple of years, we've come over by three point brand. So we don't have. Really nothing yet to do anything about this.
Yeah.
But I, you know. I just don't want to keep it in the two A M. Plaza.
Yeah.
Basement's filling up and every two years written out the sheet rock and. That's actually the last time we did a Stacy win payment to save town some money. So I'm open to anything you guys are talking. I mean, this was kind of like the Cadillac.
That's sure.
So Aaron, to answer your question this year, in the proposed library budget, there's fifteen thousand five hundred dollars for building needs.
What do you do? What we spent last year?
So year to date in twenty twenty four, we spent ten thousand five hundred. We spent in twenty twenty three, we spent fourteen thousand dollars. So. So fifteen five seems like a pretty good figure.
It was some of that probably I assume for Eric.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Negative what's what sure it's.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So I just wanna clarify. So let me email that you've sent us. This is separate from what you're saying about the what was presented. The seventy five thousand for like a CCTV system, the.
But you guys, we did like a workshop, all of us, we checked a lot and and. You know, workshop ideas. I have a committee board kind of planned out. But obviously, year to year, the reality of what's in front of you might adjust. So I think what you're looking at is a result of the brainstorming that we came up with. But I see this as more pressing than probably less what you know about that session.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I didn't realize what that was. Yeah.
Online or or just don't have this in their agreements?
That that's the priority is what he's saying.
I'm trying to go over this. So people online have an idea of what it looks like. So the engineering study of the site, ten to twelve thousand excavation of the site, fifteen thousand selling pipes, channels, outlets, brush, down, giving maybe two thousand. Grading the land properly and possible added drainage basements, eight thousand re-landscaping in the area, ten thousand, and we continue to see a twenty percent for twelve thousand. On the high end, looking at a total of seventy five thousand for that. For projections for next year, do you think that that would impact putting that down for a building drainage of thirty thousand or this later twenty twenty six? Okay, so that would go away. Basically bring what you have currently for projections down to zero or must even change or reset. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
And so one other one other potential funding source, if if we decide to move forward with this, is the fact that. We got a good bid from on the elevator. And yesterday, after the after we had the presentation from Calahan, Richard and the fellow from Calahan went over and checked out. The the elevator shaft. And and as Richard mentions in this, he thinks that that's gonna be really fairly minimal cost as far as a change order goes for that project. And so since we have earmarked twenty thousand dollars as a contingency for that project, what we don't spend on that project, we might be able to. To invest in some drainage.
And then so just to clarify, so what we see here is an additional seventy five thousand dollars. West, but you're saying that's.
Seventy five total.
You're saying twelve, not seventy five plus seven.
No.
Right.
This is the web. Um, this is what? Because that building is historic, is there any funding or any grants that you can get? To replace that, whatever the heck it is on the on the or to even just help. With this product type of.
Yeah, so we obviously, I think here the local council was here when we did the roof. There was a downtown community something grant that we were able to get to offset that.
Are there any other grants to offset this? So I guess can I can I ask that people look into that?
Yeah.
And see and then come back by the end of the budget cycle and see what's what what you have for options?
Yeah, I'm open to, I mean, we're always in progress. But yeah, well, so I will say like, since COVID, it seems like there's a lot less. Money in terms of C M B grants for buildings like this than there used to be, but. They're a pretty good committee on our board and a group vice queens. To subtract, we have software that upsets and we have some contacts to say.
Yeah, I was gonna say that might be a good.
Andy, other question?
Yeah, actually more of a comment. I know that H C Calahan has been business very long time. They're a very dependable, very professional company. They're honest. They're gonna do a good job here. But as I've said in the past, I believe that that ten percent Kins and Z money is minimal. And soon to Anthony's recent comment, if we have any leftovers, if you use it on something else, I would not tell my chickens what they hatch.
This is the I'm looking at. Go ahead. No, I'm looking at something right now. It's a store preservation grants. Grants range from ten to thirty thousand and they will match whatever. It's for county municipal governments.
Okay.
So I mean, that's right on Maine's website.
Just a recommendation. Is I would probably get a hundred to five of my high building improvement fund.
Store.
Separate for maintenance and start putting a little bit in there, especially if you know that you're getting really close to your, you know, maintenance or even creature maintenance by a grand or couples that way. Who encourage if you give them absolutely a future issue comes up.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, because we do have this opinion you. This discussion, but we do have. So we just have buckets.
So.
Yeah, so basically where that, you know, sign is all around the corner. And then you can see the downspout.
Yeah, the downspout, the downspout is a double. There's no place for it to go.
Just like.
I guess they kind of screwed Andy with the.
Yeah.
They bought it, they put it better than that. It's just deep and. Kind of accident, pulling it forward, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, one of my trustees mentioned that possibly the entire land. This in copper. Not just the monk, but the the shops and everything with all the finds that go down.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when they're looking at that, when you when you talk, I'm gonna tell you when you talk to more than one person.
Yeah, yeah.
Are they looking at high end of that storm drain, the freaking storm right right on that corner, right on the tree?
Yeah.
Looks it looks to be like maybe fifteen feet away, dump the water, right?
We talked about that. I don't want to speak for the wire district. They didn't like that. I don't know why. We had to talk more about it.
I I know, really.
But that was.
So it wouldn't be going over as far as stairs.
No, no, it would probably start probably eight feet from that where the windows are. You see a little tiny basement windows down below.
Yeah, looks like.
That's where the water starts moving in. And it's a it comes in there and there's some there's some damage that's on the wall and the ceiling there. And then you keep walking where it starts to turn, it comes in and fills up the rung.
Now, is that room lower than the rest of the library? Does it fill that entire first floor?
That room's lower. So the new addition, because we ran it to grant it, we wanted to get new additional or new additions actually. So that's that's probably the lowest spot of the.
And you have looking for some.
We have, yeah. I mean, this was ten years ago, but yeah, yeah.
Okay. Chris, you have a question?
No. We're for best boards on the research to see how far down you can check up on.
Yeah, when we did the addition. I'd have to pick up way back, you know, because that was in two thousand thirteen or something like that. But yeah, they did them all around.
Is it possible that public works do something like remove that? Stuff, whatever it is.
Yeah, well, that sounds pretty easy.
Yeah.
Get our front and get our front end loader over there.
Or more departments I need and then still got revenue and school. So really, I'm to EMS department.
I think start from the bottom and what I look at. It's gonna be a little confusion based on. So. First line item is fifteen thousand. As I tell you, every you will try and stay ahead of the maintenance on the building, particularly the stuff going on. Outside of the building. I'm not really sure because I haven't climbed up here in my. We've got we've got some water needs. In the flat portion of the roof. On street side of the building, that would have been for those of you that remember it's a health center that would have been in the section of the building. We had G N A cut up and. Thought they could fix, but they did not. Didn't get it all on the ceiling. And I don't know because I. Yeah, so we've got that issue. We've got another one in the garage, which is come down through the ceiling, taking down some of the tape in. That we just run around nuclear exhaust system. Rest of. Some of this proposed, complete some ditching. If you've been on campus, you know that we're at the bottom of the door. But he's in high school. And all the water is running down that alley. And. The majority of the. Ditching has silken, if not completely shifted, filled. So we need to remove this and some work done. Basically, the entire back portion. Of the parking lot. Around towards the building, the kitchen section where the empty lot is. Needs to be dealt with. First came out, it was a hand, and you know, the venture, it's so much water that was over the top, right? Our back parking lot, which looking forward in the next year or two or three, there'll have to be a decision on whether that that parking lot is repaired or whether it's removed. As as you know, from the hotel center. There's enough parking there. Without necessarily a block, just as you're on the front by the attention pond, what's on the side to the side of the garage.
On the ditchings, can't we just do that in-house? Like with the with the, you know?
Would the public works crew in the estimator?
Yeah. I mean, I would think we'd be able to do that. It's only ditching.
We could ask to work with Matt. I know they've been they've been pretty busy, usually when you pass through in the summer time. Working on on roads to get ready for the season. So. Okay. We've got eight thousand in for ballistics for the bulletproof vests. But the folks where. We have. The vest come in two pieces, the company carrier and then the ballistic, which was inside area. So. Carrier is the is the blue vest that you see that way. And then the ballistic goes on the side. When we replace the last set of ballistics, the company that we bought the ballistics from. Manufactured the wrong ballistics to fit our carriers. So after a long run, we wound up buying new carriers. Really just kind of advice. And we were left with our old carriers. So essentially, we were able to expand the number of vests that we have. While mainly thinking about half the price if we started just packing away and putting ballistics in. What we'd really like to do is to expand our size, ideally like with the police department. Let's say that's our assigned two personnel, actually size two personnel. We have, we have utilized a variety of sizes, everybody's size to kind of know. This one, the size of the customer. This would actually be some opportunity to give some of our full-time personnel, some of our personnel to assign their vests so that. Increase the number of vests.
I just looked this up and there is a federal. Grant program, Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Act of nineteen ninety eight, the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership. And that reimburses up to fifty percent of the costs. Are we going through that? The P D does. And do you guys look through that?
Yeah, I I ideally we use this more or less C money because we have enough vests that we could turn around and we could buy them. Of course, because I think we've got something in the ones. So, yeah, we could absolutely do that. I can work with I can work with this.
Yeah, because I mean, it's free money.
Absolutely. Okay. Now the hard part. Okay, so we've got two line items, one for resuscitation equipment, one for chassing of medic fluid. If you're having a case of danger who has dealt with the re-chassing of medic fluid last year. And we were gonna pay for that cash. And such a company taken money from resuscitation equipment. What was actually funded in the budget. Was the opposite of that. So. We don't. Have any money for that. We have forty thousand dollars for resuscitation. I'm not sure.
Did we approve our hundred thousand for the touring chassis that was costing?
Yeah, 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 yeah. We talked about that. Remember, we talked about that. Yeah.
So much more than decided to go. And so where did that money go on? Like it must have stayed somewhere. If we already approved it, if you said, line it up, get it done.
We, I've been working with these. I can't see where, wherever I still want.
I remember doing it, as you said, it would take probably three months to even get it.
Yeah, yeah, I remember because I think you need the motion, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. I.
I think it could be up to one sixty. I know we approved around a hundred fifty, hundred sixty thousand dollars a year. And you came back, you found out the cost was gonna be. One eighty to two hundred or something. And you. The whole grid was gonna be like two fifty or something or whatever it was. The whole grid was gonna be like two fifty or something or whatever it was.
And so we didn't want to try and cut the, the cost and on this rechassing, we actually removed. The fifty thousand dollar self-aware stretcher system. Um, and what we did was we took the money that we had this year and we sent both of those stretchers out. To actually have them referred, um, and gone over. So they've, they've been. They've been gone through, they're looking good, um, and that should get you to that ten-year point with all of those stretchers. And that way you're not to put that in this particular trial. Yeah, I, I do too.
Well, we can ask. We'll have to ask for Niece then where it is. When they put it back into the general fund? So it wasn't utilized or?
So, um, uh, to finish up, we've got a line item in there for resuscitation equipment, which is including, uh, replacing. Uh, this is something we go through about the ten. I'd be promising, right? At least even nine thousand dollars. Kiss themselves and probably. Probably about fifty hundred dollars. So, um, I didn't go too far with that because then we're sitting. We actually have forty thousand dollars right now. Yeah, for them, so.
You think you'll need additional thirty thousand for this year then?
Oh, I, I say actually more of the other, we could probably cut that thirty thousand.
Increase in, uh, the cost of the new, well, the rechassing versus newly. We talked about trying to push this through and get a couple extra years out of this. Have we done anything on that? Have we done anything as far as getting undercoated or getting repairs and all, all that stuff?
Oh, yeah. Yes, matter of fact, when we go to the operations budget, we'll see that each line item increases. Each of the maintenance line items increases by like four hundred and fifty, five hundred dollars, which is the underdoing. Uh, you've also done is if you go, and I think if you look, I don't have, I got a two-page graph, so I can't lay mine over. Um, we went through and reworked the truck replacement schedule. And lengthened out the replacement cycles on all of the trucks.
So, John, with that, like, because we did talk about it. Are you in favor still of rechassing or just running the truck until? It's like expectancy is done, it's personal doing where there's so much alignment, but it costs to rechass it on first, first, purchasing a new one?
Uh, that's a hard one. I mean, a, a new truck. I mean, to build a twin, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of been two seconds. You know, because you got to be in a position. The particular truck that we're looking at your chassis. It's the last diesel that we have. And therefore it's got the diesel emission system in it. We have to put the death fluid in it. And that really is the Achilles heel with that particular chassis. It's the only one we have. So if this were the other truck, which was kind of a, a, which is a gas engine. I probably feel more comfortable with that, but we're putting again, because I, I would, I mean, we spent in FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three. Um, with an out routine maintenance, we put just under fifteen thousand dollars worth of repairs. This year so far, we're, we're, we're well underway as well. So, um, I would suggest at this point, for this particular chart, rechassing is the way to go. And then really wait to see where the market comes back. To us, I mean, we, we could put it replacement on paper, doesn't mean that it's stopped there. Um, I would absolutely recommend that, yeah, that's wait to see where that goes because right now. Even if I were to sign for the rechassing on that truck tomorrow. That truck may not come back to the factory for eighteen months.
Right, because the locking prices there.
No.
You still gotta raise the chassis.
But that, and the chassis is the only thing that there's, you know, that there's some. Now, now, that being said, part of the reason the rechass cost, you know, is, um, the company that we buy our trucks from outsourced. The chassis portion of it. Uh, and, uh, they do not have great cost control. So.
Uh, did you ever look into eight different type of ambulance rather than the big box that it currently had?
Yeah, yeah.
Had done some research. There's a guy up in Bangalore. That brings in a European model and people in Europe get sick all the time and need ambulances, have stretchers, all those. Profundary things that you need, but they were coming in at half the cost. Uh, of what you were proposing. And you could have two for the price of one. Uh, have you ever explored that or did you carry that forward? Because the guy in Bangalore said you would be lucky to talk to him. Some mysterious reason.
That name Bangor, the guy in.
Brewer or Kyle.
Oh, Malos.
It's up that far, but I can do some more research and help you out if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very familiar with, um, trust me, after falling off ambulances for thirty nine years now, I'm, I'm.
I fell off a few years myself, so I can relate to what you're saying.
What I, you, you know, what I can tell you is, and you can see this if you go to the hospital and look at the ambulances that are there. The smaller band ambulances are meant for transfers. There's just not a whole lot of room. Side of especially when you're running. And, and, and I thought about this the other day. I was actually thinking about this because I knew, uh, this conversation is coming up. I thought about this as we were delivering a baby going down two, two. Um, and we would have had a hard time accomplishing that in, in a bad style. Um, and with regards to, you know, how they work with these things, but their medicine's a lot different. They do a lot. They really don't want a patient care during transport. The majority of the patient care is done on the scene and they utilize different. Different levels, so, um, yes, uh, and we continue to look. I think this is a. This will be a conversation for when you come up to. Uh, debating your replacement schedule, um, for buying new ambulance as much as we can.
Well, I think the cost of these new units were about the same price as what you're proposing for rechassing. And actually saving some money. Um, all the options inside the vehicle would be remaining seated. Uh, so there wouldn't be anybody up walking around, which is very dangerous, as you can attest. I've been in the front seat from the backseat many times. Uh, before there were mandatory seat belts and stuff like that, but no, I think you need to open your mind up a little bit and. Equate yourself in some of the new technologies that are out there. And I could be happy to provide you with all the information that you can get, you know?
I have all the information I need. I've looked at it, um.
If you're just willing to come down here and show us.
Yeah, what I, and I've realized.
Yeah, um, so for the rechassing, that is something that you think has to happen. Kind of put into this, is it a year? Or is there a push out possibility?
That truck's got a hundred, just about a hundred thirty-five thousand.
That's gas.
No, that's the diesel. That's the diesel, that's the last diesel, that's the one we need to get.
And then. Okay, and then staffing wise, are we staffing four trucks regularly, two trucks regularly, or three trucks on a day-to-day basis? So then we definitely probably not have a special. Four truck fleet, because it's like three truck fleet potentially.
Right, and that's, that's kind of a, that's included in the operations, like, because we're looking to. Third ambulance as we can store. Our call volume this year probably approached twenty-five hundred. Um, our call volume since. The end of COVID has increased in the form of.
Okay, so, uh, Bridget's been, uh, chin on this, man, and going to step things for two years now. Have you had any experience working in one of the machines?
We used to have one here.
Pardon me?
We used to have one here.
Okay, um, I, I guess that, um, you, you tell us that. That two machines have different styles of uses for different purposes. What would be the issue with having at least one of those less expensive ambulances? In the fleet and then picking and choosing which machine you're using according to, uh, what the call is.
Good question, and that was just the answer, um, by what was in the news with. You're like, we, okay, I mean, let me explain just a quick. The majority of the time, if you wanted to have a small truck. Majority of these transfers that we're doing currently. Are transfers from main general back to the nursing home. Obviously, there's some closing. So those calls. So at that point, we will primarily align services.
Not gonna say I'm an expert, but it still has to be. You know, when you get that call, uh, you know, our tech caller, and always will be called. There, there still has to be room for judgment about which machine it's, if you have at least one machine that's less expensive.
How many, uh, how many calls a year? Just, just so we got this information going forward. Uh, how many calls a year does you typically go, uh, respond to at, at age?
I didn't bring the email with me, but I believe it's translating out to. Uh, taking back, and I don't want to go off the top. I had, I had, I actually had Bill and Ron, um, run the numbers for us. Um, and over a, over a two-year span, um, it equated to about ninety thousand dollars. So it's about forty-five thousand.
We, we, you commented, you mentioned this minute ago about putting the third ambulance on if we're. Potentially losing a big chunk of the tall volume.
The emergency volume is going up. Just as quickly.
All right, thank you very much, John. We'll move on to the recreation.
Um, we're, you're asking for one special project to try to do something to our beach. Uh, anybody that's spending any meaningful time down there recently knows that the, uh. When the floor block that we put in this erosion control a long time ago. It's gotta be fixed. We're at a point now where we're gonna have somebody get seriously injured on it relatively quickly. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, I went down to Stephanie and took some pictures and. And stuff, but I, you don't have a way to show them around, but, uh, the screw heads and the neon heads that are coming up and the bits and pieces of that. Are, are a point where. You're not gonna, you're not gonna go through and screw those back in. You're not gonna fix the boards. We need to replace it. Uh, I talked with Matt earlier this year and we came up with an idea of. Tearing the boards out, fixing the box that, that's currently there, that's the structure. And then probably filling it with stone of some sort that would be easier to walk on. Safer and just basically something that, that would get us by until the day comes when we get a grant. To redo the entire beach project and then, and then you can do something else from there, but. Uh, this is more of a stopgap than anything else. And at this point. It's just really a matter of time until, until somebody has a serious injury on it. I mean, I'm just. I'm, I'm kind of sad that we haven't had anything more than that. Had some bruises the last couple of summers down there.
I've been, uh, making my feelings known, which are essentially the same as yours about the board block. And the dock, the dock, if one of the, you can't. You know, when the lifeguards go home, those kids go charging out there. And one of those kids fall on that dock, on that metal. Where, where not just the loss, we're gonna have to live with not having it repaired and having it seriously.
I noticed it because I, you know, I've been staring at it for three years. That, uh, the cement has sunk another inch, inch and a half this year. There's probably three inches that I exposed. Corrugated metal around it now. But you and I both know, wait, how long is, you know, the, the money's not there and. You know, until we find the grant, it's gonna take care of it.
Well, I, I suggested that we're beyond the point where we needed to wait for the grant. The project has to be done. Okay, it's just a public safety issue. It's pretty straightforward.
I, I completely understand, but I, I'm also reading this council talk about, you're trying to find a way to. To make the budget not go up anymore this year for the, for the people in Wiltshire, and I understand. And then, you know, I don't know where you're gonna find the money, because it's gonna be a substantial amount of money to do that, because you're gonna have to do it. It's gonna be a lot of work to get that out of there. Mike said no, Army Corps of Engineers said no. And, you know, so nobody's willing to jump up at it, so, you know, it's, it's gonna be a big project.
Or anybody as far as in the machine there.
We started some conversations, but three years ago, even when we had our, when we were looking at the grant, we were really get. And there was a permit by rule that you could, I mean, it was not gonna be, it was not gonna be a big problem for them. They saw it as, as fixing an issue. You know, and a long, long time ago, we had a hydrologist come in and the reason the beach is the way it is. Is that that breaks up the erosion of a beach. And that's why the beach kind of comes in and it goes back up to that point, because that breaks up the circulation through there. But, you know, once you take that out, you're probably gonna have a different looking beach, but still all sort of something that would be safer. I mean, everybody, you know, my guards are home at five o'clock at five oh two, then cover the kids. You know, and, and, you know, there are actually days for my staff are basically harassed, well, aren't you ready to go home yet? You know, so, you know, it's just one of those things and, and there's nothing we can do, there's nothing PD to do. I mean, it, it's, you know, we have that rear public beach that has no control. That we just can't control. So, you know, this, this thing for this year, I think, is, is the first step. We can get through this and then we can start trying to find a way to get to, get to the next step.
In the right direction with this, and I know we're all talking about it.
I understand it's it's time, this uh I think your approach, you haven't, maybe you've said Matt give up the current. Wooden platform that's on the beach, what do you, what is? Thought, Russell, what are you guys putting down? We say it's a stoner, would he use a ground?
Just something that would be easy to walk on, you know, and and not too small, that it would just ruin back down into the, that it would just wash out.
So that, and I know at one point. If we're removing the concrete and I understand that, is there any concern about things washing down into the dam? Because Matt holding, holding probably some stuff back as well.
It it that.
Has it done these studies? I'm just just asking.
When we put the boardwalk, then we at that time it had eroded back in, we had about a four foot drop. From the ground down to the beach, and so that was done as terrace to hold that back. So it that. It that was done at that time and it's really done a good job, I mean, it started to get heat underneath, so.
Taking out the woodwork and put these people out, it's well and good, but once that woodwork's been out of there for a year, it's never going back. Okay, you know, by zoning it's structured, if we take out of there.
No, I understand that, I'm just concerned that the uh. As the water's coming down, that's also slowing a lot of stuff that's gonna carry down, but we've got some pressures. It's gonna carry material down into the dam, then it's gonna be a damn.
We just have to replace the boardwalk, we just tend to buy the bullet and find the money to get those two problems resolved.
Yes, same thing, thank you. Thank you for your dedication throughout all these years.
And the other projects are gonna get done, I think those are going up soon. And the tennis courts will be done, the tennis, I will finish the tennis court project. And uh we've got the Maxwell Hall, you'll be uh the backstop and fencing more up down there. Uh as soon as we can get a track out there to get on the ground, so.
Do we have, do we have money now? Do you have money in your budget where you can start, actually, Matt does most of the boardwalk stuff? Will that get you to June? Or do you need something before?
I I don't know what we we're gonna have to do before June, I mean, we gotta do it for the kids' town, right, before before they get started. A lot of years down there, I know we didn't really discuss that, so.
So, um, okay, so if if there's another, I mean, I mean, we could always offset if you took something from another budget line item with this. You know, the program is engine or something, and if you, it would depend on what you have, still budgeted, so that might be something to think about. Um and then, yeah, I agree that, you know, if we have to find some way to get that. Here out of there, what's left, and if um we should try to do that and prioritize it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Alright, we're gonna move on to the next apartment, it's the fire department.
Hello, so um. On our budget, you'll see that from our current debt expense and the two thousand dollars on the bottom. Was due to a reserve account, which is essentially money left over from when we built the fire station. We have a small reserve account, so um we're actually technically, we would go from. One oh four this year to fifty six thousand next year. Uh so there's a, I proposed to keep the funding at a hundred thousand dollars. That would allow us to put fifty two thousand dollars. Uh into a reserve account next year, and if we did that for the next three years, we would put another hundred thousand dollars. Per year into reserve. We're we're actually paying off all our debt. Next year, so I was proposing to re basically reinstitute. A reserve account. It's station major maintenance, which would basically keep the. What you're spending in taxes, the capital for the fire department, same, but it would actually be only to an account for a reserve. Because it's just a matter of time before more, our apparatus is inexpensive as everybody knows. Um the little history, the fire department was the last account that lost the reserve account. When I sat on the council, we had a reserve accounts for everything. Quite frankly, at one point, the council decided to try to hold tax dollars, did it for five years, never had a tax increase for five years. But what basically happened is the town manager kept taking away all the reserve accounts in order to make that offset, so. I I we have accidentally got a reserve account because of money we didn't spend. Um in the fire station, I think it's a good time to try to build for the future.
Yeah, and just to speak to that, uh this is a pinnin' amount for a fire department reserve account, it's at twenty one thousand dollars right now.
So it's not one oh four minus uh thirty six.
It it as a as of March the sixth, it was twenty one thousand dollars.
Was that separate from the account you have those here?
That this would be putting money into that twenty one thousand, so there's twenty one thousand there now, and I'm suggesting putting two hundred and fifty thousand over the next three years. Into it.
I see fifty two thousand, so that would get you up to seventy three thousand.
And then twenty twenty seven, there is several expenditures, twenty twenty six.
Oh, so you're talking about the next three years.
Yeah, theoretically, I have no, after next year, we pay fifty thousand dollars off, we'll have no debt. And I was just saying, keep it at the level of rap, quite frankly, the two thousand dollars goes to tires. We have to replace the tires of the trucks, and so we put money aside just to go towards the tires. Um our maintenance account covers. Home services and oil changes and all that, it doesn't cover we lose engine or a rear ramp, or if we just don't have any funding for that kind of thing. And I don't think there's any account with city department. So that doesn't mean we couldn't take a hit on something like that, but in general, all the maintenance is covered annually. Tires come out of here and then, um because we do them all as as a chunk. And then the rest of it will go towards future.
I hate to give Dan credit, but this is a really smart approach that he's come up with, because it keeps it keeps the amount that we're dedicating to fire capital. Flat over the next few years while building up a a reserve that even after three years, I mean, probably won't we even be able to. Purchase a fire engine with that two hundred fifty thousand dollars, I mean, there's it'd be cost on top of that, but it's making headwind, right?
Yeah, I mean, uh since going with the price of trucks, which is crazy, just absolutely crazy. One company that we talked to a little bit, every three months, the trucks go up one and a half to two percent. Every three months, now, one of the nice things is if you order a truck tomorrow, this is what's happened to the industry. It does lock the price, that is your price, and you have opportunities to prepay as the truck is built to help knock costs down. But literally, it's going up one and a half to two percent a month, so, I mean, every three months, so a lot of. Major cities and stuff that buy equipment on a regular basis, which we do as well. Are buying ahead of time, their sales are going through the roof, because they know the trucks, it's getting more expensive every day. To the point that in twenty twenty seven, they're coming out with all new diesel engines, they haven't even designed them yet, but. A lot of the manufacturers have to budget for that engine, because they've got every truck sold between now and twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine. They're they're four years out, I've never waited more than a year for a fire truck, and for three to four years out, it's getting out of control. Hopefully, that will stop.
Did the platter truck pass certification and how many more years it did, you expect the life expectancy of that?
Well, the truck right now is twenty years old, um our initial. Truck replacement was through, and this got out of whack, it was to replace a truck every seven years, so the oldest truck would be twenty eight years old. Three engines allowed, um. Our oldest truck is a ninety nine, it's actually, for what it does, it's fine, um. We bought the new pickup truck that has been really. Heavily utilized, it's it's for a lot of little stuff, second out truck, you know, not house fire. Trees down, things like that, it's it's been a lot of use. I would say that over the course of the next. Uh ten, twelve years, we would probably reinsert it by another fire. Go down to three trucks plus the pickup truck, and part of that is staffing. It's difficult to get enough staff, the the trucks carry more people, so we can put four, five, six people in the truck if we choose. And we'll do that when we have younger members who can't drive, like you'll get on this truck, can't drive any of them. And then on top of that, you know, our numbers of people responding, although at a very consistent rate for volunteer environment is lower than it used to be. Uh so it's getting more and more difficult to drive more and more trucks, so. I would, there's a couple of options, but essentially, as we replace the next three trucks, we would go to. We would, we would basically need a truck out of the bus. So it takes about a year to even come up with the specs. To, you know, to design out how it all looks, and our, my intent was to start working on that this year. And come back next year with some plans, but I can do quicker than that, but there's no way, especially with our newer bid process. That I think I would have a whole bunch of plans laid out by this thirty day, and it's just possible.
Okay, um so a couple of things, uh first being, is there any, do you foresee anything? Uh in this next year that would be an unexpected thing, for example, you're not, you're okay with.
We're in good shape. I'm sorry, but part of my issue is I have that on start the four years down the road, not next year, so that's where. That's where it's starting to become.
And then the other thing I was gonna mention is, you know, reach out to dance, there's some serious talks about utilization. When it comes to fire service, maybe not in in the sense of it being a kind of accounting fire service, but certainly. Drawing in each department when purchases are made, so that way we're not duplicating efforts and really maximizing the benefit of coverage. In the region, maybe talk to stop burst, you know, that, some other things, so just keep that in mind moving forward. Um and then, yeah, I mean, if you're comfortable with having, you know, waiting until those two papers are done and increasing, I think that's a piece of.
I don't know what was discussed with this uh previous management or whatever, was to run the older ninety nine. For as long as it will run, that would be real expensive, and just let it go by the wayside and or replace it when we replace the other engine. My fear is, um the next truck replacement would be twenty twenty eight. So four years from now, if we didn't replace the ladder truck, it's now gonna wait another seven years. Which means that truck will be over thirty years old, and it hits a level, the last ladder truck we had. We actually took it out of service off wall then, because it was, it wouldn't pass test, it was unsafe, and it was just literally taken out of service for about about six months. While we're waiting for the new truck, so so my suggestion was to try to stay ahead of the ladder truck a little bit. And run the other trucks longer because they're less cost to keep them going, and quite frankly, the oldest truck. If it came in tomorrow, we'd be fifty thousand dollars worth of damage, I would probably say.
So, um Dan, well, thanks for that, um I like it. And I I think it's smart, and I like, I want to, I mean, she's been on the council before and talking about how, I think it's smart for us to get there. I'm like, and I don't, you know, sure time, I'm just trying to understand a lot, it seems to make sense to me. And staying somewhat flat, you know, just putting money away, so, you know, planning for that future, I'm I'm all in favor of that.
And I think we will see that to be a big help, like I said, when the truck gets like. Ten months out, twelve months out, you can pay now a hundred, twenty thousand dollars and save each other grand or something like that, so. Even the fire salesman stuff I spoke to last week, the fire chief's hours are like, there's no sense giving us money now. But there are times, and we'll keep you posted, that we gotta go buy something, you buy it and you save, you know, the interest.
Any other questions from the council? Alright, great, thank you very much.
Guys are all worn down.
You like being there last, don't you?
So if there's really only one thing worth talking about this, and that's the revaluation, so we know that we've got a big ticket item coming up in. Uh twenty twenty six, we'll pay part of it in twenty twenty six, and part of it in twenty twenty seven. So that's why you see the uh one hundred thousand dollar uh jump right there. And and again, you know, this might be something that you want to consider using uh part of that nine hundred eighty thousand dollars towards just to. Just to soften the border. Let me, let me look real quick and see if I can find the revaluation.
Did you get a hold though?
Do we do a what? You heard the contract, sir.
It's four hundred thousand.
Yeah, it was four, it's it's a eclipse four hundred thousand. Yeah, so right now we have ninety thousand dollars uh in the reserve account for that. Not 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 right now, because because this is the, this is the reason that you're having to 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 bid it out four years in advance, is these guys are just booked up.
Don't we have some money already set aside for that?
Ninety thousand dollars.
Got a question that comes to the regular budget on this. Or deal, where all of, I was looking at the regular budget, it was that you had. The the regular, not this capital improvements, but the regular budget, where you say all the uh. This is all like the office supplies and paper and everything out of everybody's budget, put them in one lump sum. So that, you know, that's gonna be for. I just wanna pay attention to the fact that that's gonna affect everybody's budget and kind of giving them.
It is, but it makes more sense administratively, is I I like, you know, what, I'm a one person office, am I gonna order my own office supplies? You know, in this building, it didn't make sense to me, so so we can solve it. You think you think I'm playing a game here? So 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 let me ask you, I I mean, you guys wanna, uh I mean, you've had a lot thrown at you here, and you've asked a lot of good questions. Do you wanna mull this over and maybe upon our next agenda, April twenty second, come come back and revisit the spreadsheet and say, hey, you know what? Now that we've thought about this, let's do this with the with the ambulance, the CIP, and let's do this with Public Works and so forth.
Well, the thing is, is I wanna look at the whole budget, then we go back and we will get some of this stuff, because. You know, depending on what the whole budget.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, this is just the preliminary.
I feel as though we're kind of locked into the reevaluation, right?
We definitely are, we signed a contract.
So I see some of that money that we're holding now, I think we should put that towards that, which would reduce that. In the end, so I feel as though the other stuff that we're discussing now, we're not locked into any of that stuff today, currently. So I would consider wanting to put some of that money that we've got left over. Put it towards that reevaluation, because we know that's a dumb expense that's we're not getting out of at this point.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
So that's where I'm at, just can say that's where.
So we know that it's not there.
Correct, I understand, I do wanna see the whole budget too, Linda, I wanna see it as a whole still. But I still think some of that money needs to be sunk in, because some of the things that people are proposing, we could probably go and 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 kind of um.
When you say, though, you wanna put that money in there, I don't understand what you're saying.
I think the money that's holding is a reserve or left over, the leftover money.
Yeah, so so Linda, you missed the beginning of this, so 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 you recall that last year, we ended the year. With a nine hundred eighty eight thousand dollar surplus, now we had recommended at the time that we set that aside for radio communications upgrade. Uh the council wasn't ready to go there, so that money's still sitting there waiting to be appropriated for some use. And so and so what Jim is talking about is potentially using some of that money towards the revaluation. Um we also have a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars in ARPA funds, we would not wanna use that, because we wouldn't spend that by the end of twenty twenty six.
Think we put that towards something else, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Put that as a whole, but I think the the surplus that we have from last, that that should go towards the reevaluation.
And again, so so the so the overall um expense budget is at five point one three percent, I see. Things like you just mentioned, Jim, as an opportunity to bring that number down a little bit, because.
Yeah, I I agree, I think we should literally, you know, now say, we're gonna take from the surplus of the hundred thousand. So when we are looking at the budget, we know what's really there to be allocated if necessary to lower the other costs. So I I agree with that, so next meeting, we would say it's not nine hundred thousand anymore.
So 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 that raises a question for me, do you folks want an? So, 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 so that raises a question for me, do you folks want an action item on the next agenda to do just that? All right.
Um, what was it, Karen, that during the last meeting was that about kind of us and Dana, or was that what it was around that we were just gonna set aside?
Yeah, I think that would be something we would have to discuss as well under probably. Yeah, the town. Yes, uh, good question, yeah, it would probably be townwide, but we'd have to think about putting it in. Uh, aside.
Yeah, let me, let me look, I think we actually have a damn capital reserve, let me see. So, so the mill dam only has seventy five hundred dollars in it right now.
Yeah, I just, I, I know you were taking some numbers, I asked if it's known as down here for public works. We started about fifty thousand dollars, we were ready to talk about sixty eight to do, you know, against bushings. So, quick numbers, just go behind and, and that kind of, something like that, yeah, I would put it maybe it's on a, on a front order. So then, then I, you said, Steve, you're talking about thousand dollars per tire, so, so we're about four guys. For that, can't imagine, that's gonna exceed a loader, pushing some bushes, so I can average say that's about around five for that. Yeah, I'm just, just being conservative, right, so it's, so that's nine grand, so it's. Only thirty thousand dollars, I thought I could just say something around forty, so. Of, of, for maintenance for those two, maybe I heard you wrong, I just wanted to verify cases, I was thinking maybe around thirty thousand dollars would repair those two. Uh, pieces of equipment. And probably provide us a couple of years instead of buying. Which, you know, when we're looking at that number on each one, you know, really. Was it thirty, thirty thousand, a ladder thousand each year for the next four years? Five years, thank you. So I just think thirty thousand, I think I. You know, I've been around some equipment in my day, I, I kind of know what it takes and I know where to get, where to care and use it, but. Those, those aren't super long hours on those machines yet. I don't think they're giving us great value on trade-ins, so I, I might as well just keep using them until there's, there's not much value gotten them. And then we go from there, I think spending thirty thousand, try to buy two years versus spending, like sixty. Plus twenty years, around fifty something thousand, in only two years, I was still with some money lost.
Yeah, and so, and just, so you folks are where we have about nineteen thousand dollars in the, uh, public works equipment capital reserve right now.
Work and on the equipment, given all the other discussions.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, they're gonna use it.
So we want to, uh, revenues?
Sure, so, um, I sent you, uh, as part of your package as well, um. Revenues, uh, budgeted for the, uh, for the coming year, and it, and, and what we budgeted today represents about a six percent increase over the, uh, FY twenty four budget. So revenue is always tricky because you, you need to strike a balance between being conservative on the one hand. Uh, but, but not overly conservative and then be reasonably optimistic, and I think. That nine hundred and eighty eight thousand dollar surplus from last year was largely due to, um, uh. Very conservative budgeting of, of our revenue, so in budgeting these revenues, what I did was I looked at the experience for the last four years. And, uh, and tried to come up with, uh, um, with something that. Makes sense without being overly optimistic. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, in fact, maybe I should, should go to my office and get the, the four year experience, just, just in case there's specific questions about that.
I, I guess I have a question, um. I have a question, if you're saying that's, the revenues are six percent higher, you realize that? Is that what you said?
No, what I'm saying is that we're budgeting a six percent increase in revenues next year over this year.
Okay, so if you're budgeting for an increase in revenues of six percent.
Right.
Then you add in the five percent that you're already, whatever, that's an eleven.
No, 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 Linda, no, the, the, the six percent is, is helping to offset the five percent.
Okay, all right, brings it down, okay.
It's a six percent increase of a revenue, it's not six percent.
It, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be a wash because the, the expended five percent of all of our expenditures is more than six percent of all of our non-tax revenues.
What are we re- running this year for revenues, do you know?
Yes, so, so through sixty seven percent, the budget year, we've collected eighty eight percent of the revenue that's budgeted. Uh, but that also assumes that one hundred percent of the, that we've collected one hundred percent of the nearly fourteen million dollars budgeted in property taxes, so. So we're still running, we're still running really good, um, even with that, that assumption, and so. Uh, it does give us cause to be optimistic without being overly cautious.
So are we just opening this up for, uh, Graydon, we just opening this up?
Uh, there's no one in the waiting room.
We opening this up for questions? Um, on the ambulance, you, you and I just talked about this. Right here is budget and then actual, so you're saying on the ambulance billings. We bill, we, we should have billed out one point six million and we only got one, six hundred and seventy?
No, so we did, so in, in the current, hold on, let me, let me get the headings here correct. So in, so for instance, in twenty twenty three.
Right.
We but, uh, we.
You budgeted.
We budgeted six hundred and seventy thousand, we build one point six million. But we only collect, John was at about sixty percent of what we, we, we bill, we collect.
So what about, what's, where's the rest of it?
People who, people who don't pay.
So you're getting, you're getting made whole.
Which is, which isn't always a hundred percent.
Yeah, they're, they're not, not worse because you, you can miss that.
Yes, yeah, so, so, so this year we are, you get the headings there, correct? So this year we are budgeting eight hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, that's net. Uh, even, even though, even though year to date in twenty twenty four, we've built one point, nearly one point two million. Right.
So wasn't there an issue or didn't you discover that there was? Some, and maybe I'm wrong about this, but, um, there wasn't certain things that were billed. Wasn't there just, a, a year or two ago, you had discovered quite a bit of billing that didn't happen or was? Is that, am I, am I, I, I thought there was something with the billing? Because it, it went up, um, and I can't remember what that exactly was.
Um, are you talking about what we did three years ago where?
It was two or three years ago.
Three years ago, you started involving, you started charging this company with that portion.
Okay, maybe that was a, right, I think, I was thinking of something.
Also on that, and let's, uh.
Oh, that's me, sorry.
They have a, uh, we, we talked about, uh, the difference in rates, uh, the. The going rate of a, the annual service is what we charge for capitals. What's that? Yeah, towns, okay, so, uh, where do we stand with that? Have we done any sort of audit? Made any changes this year on that or?
Yeah, their, um, subsidies this year went up five percent.
What are we at right now for that?
Yes, it's, it's hard to tell you where we are for capita because they're contributing not only a base per capita rate. But they're also contributing to uncollectibles and they're also collecting, we have done a ten thousand one way. Across the board charged as one of the towns with regards to, uh, rating persistent. And that's still in place. So, one of the things we talked about was going through it, and I talked to, to some of our towns in the contractor, is that coming next year, they're really need to. We build that whole. Building portion, if you look at it up per capita. If you take that ten thousand dollars across the board, you can take what they're contributing to on collectibles. That's pretty close to what other towns now are charging, and I've got that, I have that big article, it was a paper on, on.
And you have that calculated, what hour per town? What, what the race we're charging for town, say you add all that up and divide it by the population. That would essentially be the per capita, correct? So that should be pretty easy too, can you give us that information?
Yeah, that's all right.
Just curious.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions from the council regarding revenues?
Mentioning that, I know a few years ago, I first started, we talked about. The fire department.
Bonnie, thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie, uh, selecting revenues for insurance, how, how's that going? I mean, I don't see this here as five hundred dollars, I don't.
It's, it's going bad, uh, the company that is, uh, that does that, the, the, what do they call it? Anyway, the cost recovery, um, the, they are, they are a secret ship.
Okay, I thought it was a good idea, I guess.
It was a good idea, it seemed to work for a couple of years, but, uh, but, but, but the, every, every fire department in this area. Has contracted with them and they're all seeing the, the same.
Yes, we're gonna line up, line up, get nil, basically, not as much anyway, but.
Yeah, and, 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 uh, what we did in Belgrade with this gave us the same. Uh, contract with the same outfit, we never budgeted in advance, we just, uh, budgeted the amount that we collected the year before, that way we always had a firm figure for.
Sure.
That, yeah. Cause some years you might, you might collect nothing, and other years you might have tinker truck explosion that, where you collect a ton of money.
So I know you were reviewing this, I talked to this about it, I apologize, I missed the conversation with John, I was, I'm sort of a bit here, but I. Happy for charging versus other. Ambulance stations or whatever, companies. I've done my research a little bit as well, I think we're, I've got the mark quite a bit. Um, this room, you know, not looking to go out and just roll over the world, but I just think there's some. Areas to look at.
I think Delta's definitely set in the market.
Yeah, yes, so I, I, I feel as though that's. I mean, I'm not trying to get out of anybody, I'm trying to, I'm putting it out, but it has the cost of things to go up. I mean, we need to set, set some, some markers so.
Yeah.
Our cost implemented.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and I don't, I, I, I a hundred percent agree with you, Jim, one of my first experiences as a town. One of my first experiences as a town manager was, uh, we contracted with the, the city of Waterville for dispatch services and their costs were. Were skyrocketing, and so, and so Waterville had to pass that along, and there were some communities that were really furious about, we had a big meeting about, and I said, listen. They're looking out for their taxpayers, they can't, they can't afford to subsidize, uh, dispatch services in Belgrade, and, and it's the same concept at play here.
Yeah, we're very fortunate, we have a service, it's a really good service, it's here in town, right, signing out with, I thought we were, well, um. Person they know, like, slept for it for Windsor, and they, they, they have, they're stuck with Delta, and they're stuck with a, a certain cost, right, so.
Well, and Delta can almost charge whatever they want. Because where else are they gonna go for the service?
I know they, they are, they want completely operational costs, you know, the seventy dollars per capita. Um, and yeah, we're well under that, yeah, so. Thank you.
Well, now turn it over to the schools, we have, uh, Susan and Jennifer Lawson here.
It's your show, sir. You know, I inevitably do the request for money, ask you to approve money for my designated to, that's in. Um, because I, I think it'll make sense, uh, once we do that, so. I'm gonna walk through, uh, some, some of the work that we've worked, we've done as an administrative team, and, uh. If you have questions, you can kind of clear the room, but, uh, our board chair, Alicia Lawson is here. Our grade school principal, Colleen Randall, and those three principals, Lori Smaller here. Um, they've all been a part of, along with the rest of the team and the school board. On, uh. And the fire chief is leaving, yeah, so I, I do have a sort of systematic.
Just one moment, do we have a copy of the budget?
I'm gonna, I have stuff when it passes on to you, and I wanna explain it, so I'm sorry, yeah, I, I know that if I pass it in advance.
Understood.
So I have three different things I'm gonna send, I'm gonna pass on to you, but I'm gonna do it systematically, so you pay attention to what I'm saying to you. I didn't say that, I might have been thinking, but I didn't say. So I'll try to go this, through this as expeditiously as possible, but I, I wanna go, um. It, it's, it's obviously gonna be very difficult, we have, this process for us starts back in November at school. Um, comes to central office at the end of, uh, December. And then it's been a really, really big challenge this year. For a number of reasons, I spoke to the council a couple of months ago about the things that I knew were gonna be a challenge for us this year, and they have all come to fruition. Uh, so this is, this is, uh, this is pretty huge, so what I've given to you now is the, the top third. Shows what I refer to as a request budget, that's what, after we collected everything from the schools. Uh, and the various departments, um, this is what the budget came in at. Um, I was very grateful that I was sitting down when I saw this, if you go to the next to last column, all the way to the bottom of that, um, first third. The increase was, uh, one point, almost two million dollars, one point ninety, that hundred ninety thousand. And, uh, fifteen point five four percent increase from last year's budget to this, this year's budget, obviously, that's not an acceptable number. Uh, but it really did create a, um, a different mindset for us developing the budget because. You are not quite a nickel and dime your way, um, from a fifteen point five four percent increase to a number that's gonna be acceptable to the taxpayer, so. Uh, we had to be pretty creative, um, and I'm going to pass this next piece of it with the middle third. Actually, the middle third, yes. So you know, we went under, underwent two processes. And I actually have this on the sheet backwards, but it doesn't really matter. Second pass, I don't know if you're looking at. Hopefully making sense to you. If you look at the sheet, it's very tall, says current budget, that's what the, the current request budget was, that's fourteen million. Seven thirty thousand, four hundred sixty six dollars, which is reflected on the, uh, first sheet I passed out in that. Third to the last column says twenty twenty five proposed, so that was where we start, so as you look at the various cuts. That were proposed or or we've included in there or we're still thinking about, then um. That's a cumulative, the last column on the sheet is is a cumulative effect of the cuts that we are proposing. So starting with high school, it really is more than high school, but I asked the administrators to go through and take a look at the budgets and and do go through. Make sure that we've cut everything we could possibly think about cutting. One thing, and it may feel like a small thing, but it's but it's really big, is we have not really increased amount of money for supplies. Or for books for our schools for the last three or four years, so. Those are really remain flat, obviously costs have remained flat, so it really means we've we've continued to fall behind. So ultimately, just to go through real quickly, you can ask about these individuals if you want. The various cuts, fifty five thousand hundred and twenty five, if you subtract that from fourteen seven three fourteen million seven hundred thirty thousand. They can see that balance and then the cumulative amount of the cuts is in the far right hand column, so we. The cuts that we made were, we kind of proposed fourth grade teacher. Uh, that was in the original request budget, we had a literacy coach at the grade school. And we made uh five hundred twenty thousand dollars to facilities. Um, and I can talk about that more in a second if you'd like. We are proposing cutting the technology director, that's obviously not the full cost of the director, but we are. We have to have a plan for still covering, so we're getting rid of the director and. We're proposing cutting that position. On the wall.
Down all the way up to the left, yeah.
Yep. Uh, the I am proposing that we consider uh cutting the superintendent position to uh three days a week. Um, and again, having talked more about that. And then we have a unfunded mandate that is hit all schools this year that we have, we have to. Include one percent of the cost of our salaries for FMLA, the new FMLA law, so. Initially, that was eighty thousand, we found out instead of one percent, we added a half percent, so that's why it's now forty thousand, that's why it shows. It could just as easily show up on the addition list. So that totals um. Eight hundred sixty seven thousand one hundred twenty five dollars of cuts, which took the budget down thirteen million eight hundred sixty three thousand three hundred forty one. Which we still knew was not going to be an acceptable number uh to take to the public, so we had to try to figure out how to be creative. To get the budget done even further, so um. One of the, one thing has always been an option, and I've never had to use it nineteen years as a superintendent, but we felt we had no choice this year. Was to take a look at historically, we always give you, um, get the the board and provide to you on request. What the last three years has been in terms of actual and expenditures, what was budgeted, what was actually spent, that type of thing. And that's important, exceptionally important in terms of this budget because um I'm just gonna go off script here for a second. One of the things I've been asking you to do is to earmark uh six hundred thousand dollars that was in, that came up in our audit to um. Uh, for capital improvements, we can buy buses, we can we can do some capital improvement projects. Um, and if you do that, well, if you you really do that, then that will provide, allow us to cut five hundred and something thousand dollars out of the. Uh, it's one time money, hopefully one time thing, this is a lot more work that needs to be done than that, but we we felt we could do that was a was a reasonable trade off. So anyway, at the very bottom of the sheet, underneath the yellow. Is uh a three year historical perspective of what the carryovers had been at articles one through nine. And you you can look at that yourself, but there's an article two hundred ten thousand dollars carryover now, one hundred fifty nine thousand, two. And these are somewhat misleading because what what the state law says is that we can't over expend any lines. So the article one and article two, which are our biggest budget lines. Have actually, um, we've we've taken money out of that and transferred, we can transfer up to five percent to make sure that we have, make every line whole. In the last. As many years I've been a superintendent, we we end up having to take money from article one and article two to make the other lines whole. Uh, so as you can see, for instance, if you go down to article seven and eight for for fiscal year twenty four, which is one word right now. We're anticipating seventy five thousand, seventy thousand dollars of in the hole. So we're gonna need to to carry some money over, but the point is this. We go all the way to the bottom of this page in the right hand corner. Historically, we have carried over about six hundred forty thousand dollars uh of. Revenues that, you know, we were unexpended in the budget. Um, which is a, to me is a double edged sword, if I'm a taxpayer, we consistently are carrying over, you know, between five hundred and seven hundred. Thousand dollars, I would say, why are you budgeting so much if you're not spending that? Well, the realist reality is this, that still represents that our budgets are ninety five percent or greater efficient. You know, the the state is changing their minds all the time, but generally it's hoped that budgets will be. Up to ninety seven percent efficient, so it's not a horrible thing. But it's one of those things that we can take a look and say, if we historically have carried over between five hundred eighty two thousand. Seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, isn't it a reasonable risk for us to to take a look at those numbers and say, let's. Hedge our bets and say that we're going to do that again FY twenty five and use some of that money to. Uh, reduce the budget, so in fact, in the middle of that page, that's what we said. Article one. We are uh considered, we are proposing using a hundred thousand dollars of historical monies. To pay that down or buy that down, article two, twenty thousand dollars, I'm nothing in article four. Seventy five thousand article five, ten thousand article six, twenty five thousand article seven, seventy five thousand article eight. So using those historical numbers. We get the budget from fourteen billion seven hundred thirty thousand down to thirteen five. Fifty eight thirty uh thirty forty one dollars, and that makes it instead of being a fifteen point five four percent. It makes it up six point three four percent, so um those two different scenarios played out separately. And that's what you have in the second and third uh sections of this first sheet I passed out to you. So after the historical cuts, which I actually did third, but it it ultimately doesn't make any difference. We got the budget down to thirteen point one four percent. And then using the the cuts that I just went through with you. The bottom third, it gets the budget down to that six point three five percent. We have, actually, we passed this last sheet out. Right, yeah, but anytime.
So, just carrying forward six hundred forty two thousand eight hundred ninety eight dollars of last. Is there a reason why you wouldn't be able to get that money back, so if you gave six hundred thousand hundred funds? That that is that over, is that something that you were always carrying into your budget, you calculated that into this?
No, I'm asking out now, so you what we carry over, but but that's an excellent question, because the reason we're asking you to designate six hundred thousand dollars tonight. So we can cut five hundred thousand uh uh next year's budget, that was in, that was in the initial proposal. Uh, I can show you specifically if you'd like to see it, if you look at the top third of this this sheet here.
Yeah.
Under article um.
Nope, nine.
No, it it uh nine. Uh, you can see that. That uh. It's increased by five hundred nineteen thousand dollars, by you giving us six hundred thousand dollars for designated six hundred thousand dollars, we cut that entire five hundred and twenty thousand dollars up there.
But then if you end up with surplus at the end of the year, but if you're, where where will that go?
So um that's a a different, a different question, but very relevant, so we we have, so I'm in fact, I'm frozen the budget. This year, and so if you look at back on that same sheet. Um, Bernice has calculated this with payroll and benefits, it's the shaded one, it's got a little bit of red in it at the top. That at this point, at the time of the printing of this, we were. Uh, expecting one point two five million um to. Still left to spend, but we had, the budget is frozen, but there are, there are things we have to to extend, we're still gonna have to pay for gas, we're gonna still have to pay for insurance. We're gonna have to still pay, there's a lot of things, but we're we're not, we're not paid for a lot of other things, so um. Back to that same place, if you look at what's encumbered, and and this was what the struggle was initially, um. Article nine, we are still looking at a half a million dollars in to be spent now to the end of the year. And we're asking for five hundred twenty thousand more next year, and I just said to to Joel, Joel is great, I said. How are you gonna spend it at five hundred and fourteen first of all? What's the plan to do that? And we went through that, I said, okay, so you have to spend, that money has to be spent now. Um, and so. Between those two, this, we had, he has well over a million dollars of things that need to be done, obviously, some things more important than others. Uh, so he has a plan, we've already authorized a plan to spend that five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars down. I think if you look at this at the end of the year, that number will be um pretty small. Um, so we're gonna spend that number down, we're going to completely erase the five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so we're essentially. Looking at. Um, spending or cutting close to a million dollars in that line all by itself between this year and next year. Correct. Correct. And that's not all, it it's it's kind of mixing up the part one here, but. Um, I'm gonna ask you for the six hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy five of that is gonna go directly to capital improvement. Um, three hundred and seventy five of that is gonna go to the purchase of three buses, but I wanna wait till we. Uh, get to that, because we've got emergency funding and that's the next, next thing that you were asking, that is something we're asking you to.
Thank you, Tom. Can you help me out a bit with article ten?
Oh, yes, thanks, Jim, it's actually, I have a sheet here that I'm not passing out, and I'm not passing out because it's got um. I want, and then I should go through this with you, uh, we are, one of the things I told you about is we have negotiations this year, and I told you that we have three teachers. At the middle school, so I wanna go with the big increases have been to the budget, um, but I'm not passing it out because um the biggest thing is. Uh, we're in the middle of negotiations, I can't share information with you about that, but I can tell you that's part of the, part of the increase.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
Yeah, so like.
About that line, so.
Yeah, can I go through, I'll go through that, so the big expenses, biggest increases that are in the budget is we have, we're our budgeting for three middle school teachers. As I talked to you guys about a couple of months ago. Uh, we are, we have negotiations, we have a pretty sizable chunk in there, because as I talked to you about a couple of months ago. We are anticipating that the law will eventually pass uh to get fifty thousand dollars, now will it pass in three years? Or four years, maybe not, but it may be five, it will pass, I mean, there's no doubt about it, because when they, they said thirty, it was, it was gonna, it was gonna happen. They said forty, it was gonna happen, the momentum is there, um, it it will happen, so we're currently at forty thousand five hundred. We have, we made a commitment and told you we were heading that direction, we're still very low. Um, if we continue on this path, um, that we've started with negotiations. We should put ourselves in a very competitive position as a school system, and then when and if the law passes in the next four or five years. We should be in a pretty decent place to make that jump to the minimum. Sounds pretty bad, you know, we we need to get to a place close enough to the minimum to be able to to do that. So there's, there's a pretty sizable chunk of money in there. Um, I mentioned earlier, it was on the cut side too, we have a forty thousand dollar increase that was unfunded mandate for the new FMLA law. And then it's a hundred ninety thousand dollars in your new debt. Um, we had paid off all our debt service, um, you remember last year, you voted on um approving the new boilers, the the uh. Well, you know, you 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 put, you get, provided a lot of money to do some more, you you provided money to pay for the new fire suppression system. But everything else got along, uh, we were able to push that off for a year, but we can't push it off anymore, so that that payment is a hundred ninety thousand dollars. So that's what, that's that total increase, uh, health insurance, we got our numbers today. Um, back when I first started doing this job, when they decided what the what the increase was gonna be to the health insurance, they told you. This, now they send you what the new rates are gonna be, you have to go figure it out yourself, I got it later this afternoon, I haven't had a chance, Bernice has an chance. Um, to to get that, but I can tell you, I can give you the parameters. We budgeted ten percent, pretty standard, um, last year the range was between, I think, three and fifteen. Uh, we came in at at less than ten, so we budgeted ten last year too. This year we budgeted ten, the range this year goes to eleven and a half, eleven and a half, yeah, so we budgeted ten. So there's a possibility, uh, we do have a fairly high usage rate, which is what they base that increase on. Um, so. I'm hoping we're below, if we're below eleven and a half, I mean, if we're below ten, we're gonna see a reduction in the budget, if we're above, it'll be no more, more than. One and a half percent and um I can't, I haven't calculated all of that will be. I do wanna point this out, is that I um. The, there seems to be, there is a sizable increase to the transportation, the last year we were new, was a new department for us, we did our best to calculate it. Um, as I pointed out earlier, we're probably gonna over expand that line, and that's okay, because overall the budget is healthy. But even with the increase that's in there right now, it's still less money, what Northeast China was gonna try to continue to contract with us.
So would, so with that, I got a couple, I got one couple of other questions I could ask you, so um. When you were talking about cost insurance, what, what is even considered, what's the value for uh cost of insurance to for an employee? No, I mean, was the cost, was the cost for each employee, for those teachers?
Well, we offer, we offer multiple plans, um, so. Um, we're probably contributing, the full family is our most expensive, and I think that's somewhere in the twenty six or twenty seven thousand, we're contributing eighty percent.
And that's, that helps me there, and the other couple of questions I have is, you're talking about the buses, um, I know it was. In a, in a fail. Probably the wrong time to ask, I know we're looking back into getting some more electric buses that were more reliable.
No.
No, we're not.
Well, we are, we were, um, that.
Well, that was the last survey.
That was what we were hoping was gonna happen, that is not what's happening.
Yes, that's out the door now.
Well, it's out the door, but the school board is going to. We, we had a very um lengthy meeting with the uh Lion Electric is the company that we bought the buses from, or where we get the buses from. And we had a meeting with the main department of education, um, their president, um, several members of their team, it was a pretty. Big meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and they took all four of their buses back, they said they went through them completely. Um, I've told the savers, they they're ready to come back, at least two of them ready to come back. And told, went through, have a list of all the things that they they found, um, and uh. You know, they, I don't, I don't wanna give my personal opinion, it's just, it's a, you know, it's. I've, I don't think I've changed my feeling in that, I think Lion does um. Uh, scrambling, because I think they feel that their reputation is on the line, not just because of us, this is not just happening here.
No, I understand.
But they want, they want this to be successful, so I think they've been really um guarded. In sending them back to us, because they wanna make sure that when they come back, that they are safe, um, we are, we have not, we're not. Totally comfortable at this point in taking that chance, so we have actually gone through the process and it's kind of bleeds into to the other request, but it it just makes sense. Is that we did ask for and receive emergency funding from the Department of Education to get three buses, well, emergency funding sounds really good. Except all it means is they'll make the muscles available as long as you can be fun, um, so that's why we're looking for the uh.
I guess, that's what, so we we all. And I know we didn't pay for them, I know they were a part of the whole program, but we didn't leave with all the charging stations up there.
No, we didn't, no, we didn't, we did, we had to pay for somebody to put a pole in and some other work to get three phases in there.
Yeah, I know that.
But we did not pay a great deal, we got reversed most of the. Part of the grant, yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering if what Lionel's responsibility for us setting up, you know, we use the charging stations and that, or you know, it's kind of veil. My last question would be uh substitution, I know it's been tough, you know, I know you guys are. Working really hard on the teachers, I said, do you see that budget? Mine, has that increased for you guys that work?
Substitute teachers?
Yeah.
Um, it it has gone up a little bit, it it really has not gone up as much as it should, um, you know, we we. Um, it, it has gone up a little bit, it, it really has not gone up as much as it should, um, you know, we, we.
It's struggles out there for everybody trying to get subs.
Yeah, we've actually, I hate to say this, but we've actually been doing somewhat better, um. Yeah, we did increase our, um, how much we're paying our subs, uh, a year ago, and we actually then. We had initially decided for raising off for teachers and not uh for the ed techs, and then we, then we were really struggling to get ed techs to come in, because. Why would they be an ed tech when they could be a teacher?
Right.
Um, and then we thought the opposite, we made the initial decision, why would you be a teacher if you could be an ed tech with the same money, but ultimately, we've. We've gone back to what Houston, what they used to do, which is we pay them all, um, all the same rates. People wanna teach, teach, people who don't wanna teach could be an ed tech, so we, we have some, some people that are really outstanding.
Perfect, thank you.
So I wanna go through this sheet, oh, I'm sorry. So this one is what basically goes out to the public, um, once uh this is approved. Uh, it actually goes out before then, um, I can't remember off the top of my head why I have those. Yellows represented changes, I think, I don't remember why, um, at the time. But our, uh, overall, I just wanted to go through this, our Article one. Regular instructions, our biggest article, that line is up by two hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. Um, that, if you, if you look at this a little closer, it should, it should seem a little bit amazing. Because we have two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in there for the three teachers at the middle school, so. Three new teachers makes over that, plus we have, uh, we're doing negotiations, so we really have taken a look at that, trimmed that to, to where, um. Where we think it's gonna be pretty tight, but I, but I, given historical uh numbers for Article one, we really feel that, that. Uh, can be managed that way. Same thing is somewhat true for a special ed, uh, that's up one point three three percent. Um, things that Sue Fawcett, our special ed director, has shared with the team is that. Uh, we have, when she came here four years ago, there was a pretty healthy balance, um, from the local entitlement and. Um, I know her funding source, which I'm blanking on right for second. Um, but we really have paid for a lot of our positions, we've had a significant, not a significant, but we've had a pretty decent. Um, carryover in, in line two, because we haven't, we had positions A that weren't filled, and B. That were filled, but, but paid with uh additional federal grants, uh, we are, that doesn't exist anymore. Well, we still have federal grants, don't get me wrong, but they don't exist in, in the same way. Uh, other instruction uh is up one point four four percent to seven thousand dollars. Um, that includes. I'm sorry, that, that, that's. A, a number of different things, which I don't have written down right now, but, um, student, I was gonna say, Article five is the one that includes guidance and. Nurses and all those other, other things that are social workers and such, um. That's up two point seven one percent, the system administration, um, again, this is, if the board adopts the. Uh, my recommendation to make the superintendent position three days a week. Um, that would reduce that down, and I have already cautioned the board, and for some reason, I'm not standing in this position next year. That they probably will not, if I would not strong, I would not recommend they cut the position to, uh, to three days. Um, school administration is still up, but it's, it's, um, it's, it's. It's down a little bit because we're moving the director of technology position.
What is that?
Director of Technology, that's the person who's in charge of all of our, um. All of our educational, you know, all of our computers, all that.
It's all that, the IT infrastructure.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, so, and I will say this, the reason. Do I love making this cut? No, I think if you're gonna ask the community to support a, a challenging amount, I think you gotta, you gotta show. A good faith effort to, to uh make some cuts. And, and ask for teachers, and I think this, then it's for a long time, I think there's almost a quid pro quo expectation that. Um, we look at cutting administration, um, and so that's what this is based upon, um. And I would say this, four years ago, when I came here, our infrastructure, our technology department was in shambles. Was absolutely terrible, the year before I came here, um, the, the whole, the entire computer department, technology department quit just before school started. And they hired, they contracted with somebody to run a technology for the school during that year, and, and they did the best they could. Um, they, they did, they did, they did this, they could. But we, we continued to fall further, further behind. When, when we came on, when I came over four years ago, uh, we, I convinced the board to put a director into, into the budget and to, uh. Add one technician, uh, and the person we hired at that time, and I don't mind saying this publicly, because it's, it's a real positive, is Mike Delisle. I know, I mean, if you, when Mike was here, Mike is a, went to Brad, um, but he, uh. He's, he was outstanding, but his forte was infrastructure, so he really, over the, over the two plus years, he was the, uh, the director. He really single-handedly orchestrated kicking, looking at, we, we use, um, S R funds. He went out and get grant monies, he did just all kinds of stuff, and really turned it from a, from a shambles into state of the art. Our, our present situation is really, really good, our kids have great devices, our, our servers are great, you know, all those things are, are really, really in shape. Um, which makes me nervous, because I don't really wanna take the chance of that, you know, that we're losing that. Well, I, I think the, um, the hope is gonna be that we, we, since that time, we added the second, a third, a second tech, which made the third person to the party. So we, we still have two high-quality people, um, who are going, planning to stay with us, and, and. I think they really feel that they can do it, or if not, part of the reason that cut is, is as deep as you might think by cutting a position. Is because we are, we're, the board and I are still contemplating whether we're gonna add a third tech back, and. Um, or we're going to try to figure out some other way to have those two, um, sort of manage the, this, because they're both ex. They're both technicians, but they are like, um, exceptional technicians, and people have a great deal of confidence, and so. It's a risk, I'm, I'm, I'll be honest with you, I, I know this feels like a lot of money, and it is, and we're not totally comfortable asking for this amount of money. But this is, this is a tight budget, and it, it is, the way I explained about the historical cuts and things like that, it's a risk, you know, but historically, it shows that we are.
Oh.
I, I, I explain. Okay. Okay. So, and, but I wanna go through this, I'm trying to quickly go through this, the. The other two things, the adult ed and the school nutrition program are what we refer to as enterprise accounts. And what that simply means is that theoretically, those are supposed to run the business, um, we are responsible for them as a school. The taxpayers are responsible for voting on their portion of their budget, um, so that's all you see, you don't see their total budget. But adult ed, in theory, is supposed to collect fees, um, and collect enough fees to pay for their entire program. It doesn't happen anywhere, virtually, everybody else in adult ed programs, the communities contribute something. Um, you may recall, maybe, don't recall it, we, we became part of the, um. The bigger group, um, you're part of.
Which one are you referring to, the past year?
No, the, the, the. Yeah, so anyway, we now have a, uh. A group that includes us, God, and we've always shared the director role, uh, and now it includes our issue too, and we are officially. Uh, one unit, and we call ourselves Kennet McNevers, and Josh Fire is still the, uh, the director, um. And so this year, that, that number is, is, is going to fifty-eight thousand, uh, this is the best, again, it's a fairly new organization. He feels comfortable, and, and told them if we need to cut two thousand dollars, we may, um, to get it back to, to flat. The school nutrition program, we had a, a very, um, strange thing happen this, this year that never had happened before. We actually got a letter from the state that said we had too much money saved, which is not surprising, because, um. With them always contributed, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six of my mind, don't hold me to the number, they always contributed a big number. School nutrition program also, in theory, is supposed to be self-sufficient, is supposed to collect money from, from the kids. Uh, through the federal program, through free reduced lunch, all those different revenue sources, and they, you should raise enough money to pay for the whole program. Um, it happens in about five percent of the schools in the entire state, um, if you dig a little deeper there, that's really not true, because like. I know when I was in, when I was in a, a former district, ours ran in the black. But it really didn't, because if you look, we paid for the, the food nutrition, um, director out of the regular budget. So if you take, you add that, then they were, they were operating the red light. So, but the, uh, state basically cited us and said, you have too much money in this program, so you need to spend it now. So I had to, um, tell my new director, and she had to go on a shopping screen, so she should go buy new equipment, which was great, because. On the heels of buying all this new equipment, four or five other pieces broke down. So, um, but the, the, the good story is that we still have a healthy balance there, and so we're asking for seventy-five thousand dollars less from the taxpayers. So if you put those together, two thousand dollar piece to the adult ed, seventy-five thousand dollar reduction to, um. School nutrition, it's a seventy-three thousand dollar decrease, so it takes that six point three five percent increase to five point six seven. And then at the very bottom of that, our revenues, our revenues, we, we got about a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars more from the state. Uh, most of that is in the first year reimbursement for all those buses we bought before, we'll get three years of reimbursement for. Ones we already purchased, and when you start next year, we'll get three years worth of reimbursement for the ones we will purchase. Um, so for the next four years, we should get reimbursed, additional reimbursements for buses, um. So we are, we. Expecting about the same tuition that we receive, primarily our tuition students come from there. Uh, we are not expecting as much daycare. As we've, we have received that past, so we have the office, the town has said, we, we have not met our revenue, um, reductions. So we're, we're just trying to be more conservative, I think we may have this year, the year we're in right now, but, uh, not before that. If gate receipts, um. This lady's revenue, we kind of think, it's a, it's a tough one to guess, because it's this lady's, but I think we know some things that are coming, uh, expected to come. To us, and so we, we're hoping to get twenty thousand dollars in this thing's revenue. And fund transfer is, we had done some, we got some rates from, uh, electricity main, um. When we did some, some of our work, so that money has to go into a, a special account, and then we transfer it in as a revenue. So that has to be, uh, carried over as a fund transfer. And then here's the part that makes this, it's again, adding to the, um. I guess being tricky, um, or, or making it a little more scary with this budget. We're hoping to have three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I'm quite certain we're gonna have it this year. Uh, when you pick a number that you're gonna carry over to fund the next fiscal year. Um, by the way, it's, it says here, FY twenty-one, it should be FY twenty-four, um. That if you don't have that money, you create a small hole, or you just have to create a hole, um, in your budget, so thanks to the, uh. The will of the town, a number of years ago, when we had pretty significant debt in the school, and you made us whole. Um, that was my first year here, and I appreciate that, uh, it has permitted us to have money, and if, if not, we would be. Any carryover money we'd have, we'd have to just be paying back to town until that, that was all paid off, um, but that's permitted us to. Have, um, a balance for it, uh, ever since then, so. So the total, um, to the taxpayers is five hundred and nine thousand three hundred and nine dollars for six point six one percent increase.
So Jim, with, uh, so let's go fiscal year twenty-three, we look at the carryovers, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, then we look at, um. Carrying for. Year seven hundred thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. So that's just the difference of basically over budgeted, right, correct?
Right.
And so when we look at, are you carrying for, so it would be seven, I mean, just shy of a million dollars, and do you take that into your next budget?
No, we, we designate, we could, we could designate a certain amount of money, and we, we picked three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and then the rest of it becomes undesignated, no, it all becomes, uh, undesignated to the town. Because we're, we work under the town's umbrella.
Yeah.
Uh, and then you decide, you can only spend it on school-related things, which is why I'm asking six hundred thousand for, uh.
We have a, um, a figure, so that would be. Like we're, so. You know where we were with that last year? Nope, sorry.
But Renee's is the one that, that, uh, I told her what our needs were, she told me what she thought we, looking at the audit, we sat down together with the audit, and.
If we give you the six hundred thousand on the budget now, it's, um. So that means there's nothing we could then say. Take back, right, because that has to be expended on school.
Correct, when, when the school was in debt, when, when the town was paying the debt for the school, then anything that was. Um, carried over or carried forward, um, automatically defaulted to the town, and it became the towns to use as they, as they see fit. Um, when the town made us whole, then anything that's carried forward, it goes into undesignated. And the only thing it can be designated for by you guys is for use by the school.
So, so when I say that, not just whatever is helpful, so we might want to think about that, that, um. Giving, so it's either ways, tax payer or money, right? Um, if, if we were able to find the large article items that have the runovers. And kind of forecast, um, there may be opportunity that here to recover that. For the taxpayer, the municipal side, so that's what I'm getting at. Um, okay, and then can you talk about, are you going more part-time, are you looking to retire soon?
I'm retired technically.
Okay, okay, so you're just kind of lingering, and.
I think it's more than that. I will, I will just say, we have, actually have an executive session, but I don't care, it's my issues, so I, I don't wanna talk about it publicly, but I would, um. I would welcome the opportunity to not be responsible for being here five days a week, but I can tell you, as long as I'm doing the job, I will be responsible, I, I can't, it's just my nature.
Yeah.
I do, I work twenty-four seven, um, I respond to emails twenty-four seven, if I hypothetically, this gets approved by the board, and I'm working Mondays. And I'm not working Monday and Fridays next year, um, I'm still checking emails, I'm still responding to people, I'm just not scheduling meetings.
Yeah.
I'm not scheduling anything, uh, on those days, and if I'm here, it's my own thing.
Okay, that's true, um, because I was kinda, I'm sure you talked to the board, and it's obviously that. We're not taking a replacement for the same.
No, no.
So, that's, yeah. So you're asking for.
Yeah, yeah, I, I didn't see that listed as action, I don't know. Yeah, well, well, it is, I mean, on, on the agenda, it says request the town council to vote to designate, so it's. Yeah, those are all great questions, because realistically, it is. We, we can, when we get the audit, we can decide, we can designate on our own how much we're gonna carry into the next budget, so we, we put three hundred and twenty-five. Um, more specifically answered your question, should they feel a little bit better about, um. How trim, or tight with trimming this budget, is the realistic number obvious is over nine hundred thousand dollars, we're carrying three twenty-five into the budget, we're still at six hundred thousand, we can ask you for. Run destiny.
Is this something that has to come out? Cash from there?
Yeah, it, it, it's more of a town matter, you just know like a, a, a pot of money that's over here, so it's a counter. The other thing I wanted, just for your information, unlike towns and, and other municipal, uh, governments, schools are not expected. We have to be very purposeful, uh, we can't just have a, a fun balance, um. And the, the reason for that is really, it, it really makes a lot of sense, we're all, you know, taking from the same taxpayer pocket, so why would you be expected? To have a fun balance for an escrow, and we have one too, it's, it, it just doesn't make any sense, so. Schools, um, are not encouraged, are encouraged not to, so that's why we have to come to you and say, this is money that's left over from the school budget. It remains undesignated until you does.
Yes, and, and Jim, isn't it true that the state law?
Yes, and and Jim, isn't it true that the state law limits uh how much undesigned and fun balance you can have?
They do, but that's where it's getting, it's getting crazy, they, they uh used to be for. I've done, I've done this with intense nineteen years and for up until last year or two, it's been three percent, um which, which sounds like not much. Um and now they're, they're uh, it's gonna go to nine percent. And I, if I were a taxpayer and knew that schools could keep nine percent of my money, I, I think I would not be happy about that.
What is the balance?
You're asking what, well, if, I don't know what it is, it fluctuates throughout the year always, so it's not that, it, it changes month by month, depending, especially. Depending upon, you know, whether or not we're collecting taxes.
Only one undesigned fund account, this, like, the school doesn't have its own undesigned.
Yeah, yeah, they do. So if you look at the, the, the audit, it'll tell you um what the, what the undesigned balances.
Yeah, but, but that's a snapshot in time.
Right, I, I'm assuming that it's over six hundred thousand, right?
Oh, yeah. It's over nine hundred thousand.
Did there was no back, buses, it was such a disaster versus this year. This point, I know the wife was paid better, I know you. Actually, therefore, asked for the money for purchase of buses. How much have we spent above the amount by renting buses? This year versus when the bus were there?
The buses had no cost to say anything, we rented three buses from the beginning, Lion has paid for all of those. But, but I guess it's, it's been, we did have to pay for unexpected diesel costs. Um so we're paying, and and the first month, Lion didn't pay for that, in the last few months, they haven't paid for the cost of diesel as well.
Okay, so that, that cost for diesel would be purchased, and diesel buses would be there, the budget was must be using that.
Correct.
No, I think you get that.
Yeah.
And so specifically just for six hundred thousand.
Yeah, so if, if I were to make a motion, I would move to designate, I would say, I would move to designate, and then just read the rest of that sentence. Yes.
I'll make a motion. I request the vote designate six hundred thousand from under, uh undesigned funds. From the uh fiscal year twenty-three audit, the capital improvement accounts. Um for projects that we have been cut from the twenty-five proposed budget and fund three diesel buses. We have received emergency approval from the main department of education for three new diesel buses pending approval for funding.
Okay.
Alright, so we have a, we have a motion that needs second, in favor to designate six hundred thousand from undesigned funds uh to fund. To the capital improvement account for projects that have been cut from the fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget and took on three diesel buses, on favor. All are in favor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Am I, am I allowed to move to a turn? It's just debt service, it just covers the, 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 the financing and the bonded indebtedness that, you know, has, so it's, yeah, it's just. I mean, there's nothing to cut from that budget. It, it's already obligated.
Do you have the letter for us to sign?
Oh, I'll get it out of my office, but I do.
There was a letter that we were uh going to send to Craig Pittman, the governor, and also legislature.
I, I remain concerned. Under other business, um. Or a couple of things, one is um moving um the U. I never got a copy of the um, the chest sort of bill. And I really would like to have a copy of that, just to see what that looks like, what that's costing us. Okay, that's one thing, um the other thing is um just a brief in app by eleven on. What part of the streets, um up the hill, whatever, we're talking about doing, doing inside republic and what part of private. And uh. That's, that's it.
So, so the public roads are High Street, Hillside and Spur Street. That's it, Hillside, High Street, Spur Street, that's it.
And I think that we won't know exactly what we're gonna do until we have.
We, we should, we should, yeah, we're meeting with the engineer three o'clock tomorrow and. Um then they're gonna issue a report, we should have it in a week or two.
Just gonna meet up there?
We are, but Boston, we can't have any more than three, three people.
I don't want that, but we're meeting up there, oh, yeah. Well, no, there's three, we can, we can have three, three without.
Three would be the maximum. I wanna go home.
Great, all in favor? Alright, meeting is adjourned.